Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Planning Board meeting for the Town of Chatham for September 27, 2021. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And in a moment, I'll read a few points regarding that. Just to get started, I would like to ask everyone to help with the clarity of the broadcast. If you are not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphones? Or if you're connected by phone, please mute your phones. And also, everyone except Planning Board members, could you also disable your video? If you are not speaking and if you're connected by computer, by Teams? Thank you. This just helps with the clarity of the broadcast. So I will mention that this meeting is being recorded and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, could you let me know? I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. It's all right to record the meeting, but we do need to be notified. Okay, thank you. So this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number 508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 403-727-480-pound. Again, that's 403-727-480-pound. And as I mentioned, you can also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that's in the agenda posted on our website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, I also mentioned that the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. Here's a few additional points regarding our remote participation procedure. We'll begin with a roll call of all the board members. After an agenda item has been discussed by the Planning Board, I will allow, as Chair, I'll recognize you for any non-board members or citizens who would like to make comments or questions. When you are recognized by the Chair, please remember to repeat your name. And also, if you're connected by telephone, please repeat the last four digits of your phone number. We just want to be able to clearly identify all speakers. Also, when the Planning Board votes this evening, all votes will be taken by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting with a verbal confirmation and we'll note the time of adjournment. I'll also mention in advance that we have two public hearings on this meeting agenda. And before those public hearings, I will review the public hearing procedures that we will be following at that time. So before I do the roll call of all board members, I will also ask if any board member has to recuse themselves from any matter on tonight's agenda. I actually do need to recuse myself from the site plan review for 356 and 366 Shore Road, the Chatham bars in matter. So Arthur Spru, our Vice Chair, will be conducting the proceedings for the Chatham bars in matter. So let's begin with our roll call of all board members. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
And Warren Shane, are you present? Warren, I think you're still muted. You're still muted. There you go.
Okay, it looked the same. Warren Shane, present.
Thank you. Bob Werschafter, present.
Bob Werschafter, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
And Tom Gagin, have you joined us yet? It looks like we're still waiting for Tom. This is Catherine Halpern, and I am present. All right, so let's go to the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for September 13 meeting. Can I ask if anyone on the board has any corrections, additions, amendments? Okay, there being none. And Roger, you were absent. You could abstain from voting if you'd like. But let's do our roll call vote. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for September 13?
And so move.
Great, thank you. So Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Shane?
Warren Shane, approve.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
I'm agreeable, I approve.
I think it's more appropriate that you abstain. All right, has Tom, okay, thank you. And has Tom Gagin joined us? All right, this is Catherine Halpern. I also approved the minutes for the September 13 meeting. So now we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the site plan review for 356 and 366 Shore Road, Chatham Bars in owner. And I will turn this over now to our Vice Chair, Arthur Spru, who will handle these proceedings, and I will recuse myself. Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, so why don't we begin with the applicant to present the project and the site to us? I believe Andrew, is that you who is going to give the first presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will give the first presentation, and then we're here for questions, certainly.
Okay, so go ahead and proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, an attorney in Dennisport on behalf of the applicant. With me on the line is Nate Jones and Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering and Chris Cannon, who is the architect designer for the proposal. This is a request for site plan review for a couple different proposals at the 356/366 Shore Road property. This is a property that has 10 dwelling structures on them. They are all part of the Chatham Bars in. The proposal is to construct three, well, at three of the buildings, six, a total of six plunge pools, which are small pools with patios, and also three dry patios, meaning just patios as shown on the plan at either end with no pools in them. We are also requesting, it's shown on a different plan, landscape plan, and the, another site plan, which is a set of stairs, and there it is in the middle, a set of access stairs down to the water. And we did review these plans with a number of you who are able to attend the site visit. And I wanted to give you a couple of updates from that meeting with some comments that we heard at the meeting. As for the stairs themselves, the, from the top heading closer to the bottom will be permanent. There will be a seasonal section of, two seasonal sections at the bottom, which would be rolled up and removed from the beach completely. They would be brought up and stored on Chatham Bar's property, so they would not be there through the winter. These stairs would have some lighting and electricity, and there would be a water service running to the bottom of the stairs where there will be a little area to wash and rinse your feet. The water, all the utilities are actually going to be attached to the underside of the stairway, so they will not be in the ground. This is a proposal. Everything you see before you has been approved by the Conservation Commission. We will be going to the Board of Appeals in a couple of weeks for a special permit to alter the pre-existing non-conforming conditions. And we're here before you this afternoon for site plan review. Now, following up, as I said, from the site plan, the site visit that we had, I wanted to point out several things for the record formally. The first is that on the site plan, there is an area marked at the north end of the southerly parking area. There is an area noted for staging of materials, so they will be located during construction off the road, as will construction vehicles. The construction is anticipated pending approvals to start in early January of next year and to be done by March. The, as for the stairs themselves, we are proposing, and it can be a condition, that there be a sign at the top and bottom of the stairs that say CBI guests only. This is in response to a comment and discussion that we had at the site visit. As for access to the top, there's a semicircular area that you can see, which is accessed by a set of stairs. Stairs go down to a grassed area. The top of that semicircle, where there will not be, otherwise be stairs, will be blocked by landscaping. So there is an existing fence that runs along the top of the bluff. It is going to be adjusted to meet into the ends of the semicircle. And then the semicircle, as I said, for safety and aesthetically, will be blocked off with plantings, except for the set of stairs, which will bring you down to the grass area. And then the stairs start. This afternoon, and I realize we sent it late, but it was in response to the site visit, I did email a copy of a sketch plan that Chris Cannon prepared. Certainly, what I'm about to say can be a condition of the site plan review approval. There was discussion about, at the site visit, about the patios and the plunge pools, vis a vis any drainage needed and screening for, of any fences that would be there. The pools themselves will most likely have automatic covers, and otherwise, they will have fences, as would otherwise be required. What we show on the sketch plan that we submitted is a prototypical fence with a pergola on it that would be over the pools. The pergola would be for privacy with some slats. And there is also shown, as coastal ultimately would determine necessary or not, the, an area of some stones and gravel and drywells for the patios themselves as needed. They don't anticipate, these are not large areas, so there will not be a lot of runoff. It is a mostly grassed area, but we did submit that plan for you for your consideration. With that, I think if you have any other questions, particularly technical questions, as I said, Chris, Nate, and Sean are on the line, and we'd be happy to answer them, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Andrew. I do appreciate you meeting us for a site visit because that helped clarify quite a few things for us board members. I'd like to begin with, go down and have the board members first ask any questions or make any comments. Let's begin with Warren Shane.
Yes, this is Warren. I too'd like to thank all those who were present for the site visit. It was very helpful to me. I don't have any substantive comments, other than one which I made on the site. And that is that, you know, if I were disabled and in a wheelchair, I would find it very nice if I could get down to the landing on the top of the stairs. And there's really no provision for that in the current plan or in the one that was presented previously. So I would again suggest that perhaps there would be a way to wheel a wheelchair down to that very private and lovely overlook. Other than that, no comments.
Okay, thank you, Warren. Next, let's go to Bob Werschafter, please.
I have nothing more that wasn't answered at the, at the site visit.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Bob Dubus, you have any comments, questions?
Bob Dubus, no, I looked at the plans. I think they're adequate. And I think it will benefit the people that stay there by not having to walk and go down quite a ways. They can just walk out the buildings, walk down to the beach, enjoy the beach there, and then come back up. I don't see any problems. I thought that the pools were, we didn't discuss those before, but I think they're a good idea. I'm in favor of the project myself. I think they've done a good job at it.
Okay, thanks, Bob. And Roger Griffin. Griffin, you have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. Obviously, all my questions were answered at the tour, I think. Thank you for the tour, everybody. And you've, you've, you know, you have, you've had all the misses. I think you've done a good job of planning, and I think it's great. You guys, you always do things well, and I have no problem with the project whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. And unless Tom Gagin is here, if he's not, then we'll just go. Oh, okay, Tom, then, can you, if you have any comments or questions?
I was not present at the site visit, and so I would like to recuse myself, please.
Okay, that's fine. You can still make comments on the plans as they're submitted, though, Tom.
Thank you. I have no additional comments, other than what's been discussed by the other board members.
Okay, I just have a few things that, this is Art Spru. I'd like to just ask a few things of clarification. When I talked at the site visit about lighting, and I went back and looked at the plans, I'm just wanting a clarification. There is a plan, I think it's drawing 8A-03. It's got several different types of lighting fixtures on it. I was hoping, I was wondering if somebody could just walk us through which light fixtures are going where? And if, again, it doesn't look like the Cape Cod Lantern is a cutoff design, so that may not be an appropriate fixture. The other two do appear to be, but if you could just walk us through where the light fixtures would go.
Okay, this is Andrew. If Chris Cannon can address that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so you're correct in that the Cape Cod Lantern is probably not appropriate. That was when we had a larger, larger platform at the center, and that was downsized, and I think as a result of that, that that light goes away. The Hunza step lights, the solid eyelid squares, would be found on each post. They're probably two feet-ish off of the treads and are downlighting specifically for the purpose of making the stairs safe and providing enough light for the stairs. The Euro single is to be found in the planting areas of the, of the upper terrace and cast lights also down. Both these Hunza lights that have been specified are found in very similar areas on the campus, and they've been, I modeled these after exactly what's been found there. So nothing, nothing new. I do show the, both of these images surrounding the stair in the plan AO3 and how they're placed in their, in their site.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, Andrew, I want to thank you for listening to us during the site visit meeting. I appreciate the adjustment you made on the French drain. I think that's a, that's, that's good help in the mitigation effort. Other than that, I have no other comments on this. I do support this also. I think this is going to be very helpful. After going out there and doing the long walk, I can, I can understand why you're proposing this access. It does make sense. With that, I would like to ask, I think Christina, can you tell us if there is anyone from the public who has any comments that they would like to make associated with this application?
I do see one hand raised. EBG?
Yes, thank you. Elaine Gibbs. I just had a question on the, on the screen that had the six, showed the six plunge pools. If I'm reading that correctly, it looks like they're all within the 100-foot buffer, and I know this is more of conservation. And two are actually within the no disturb zone. Were they approved by conservation, those pool locations within the no disturb zone?
This is Sean Riley at Coastal Engineering. Yes, they were approved about a year, year and a half ago. They were under an order of conditions that was provided by the Conservation Commission. Though, all the work that was done or proposed for these pools and patios had a significant amount of mitigation associated with it. If you'd seen over the past couple of years, the work that's been done to remove all the invasives on the coastal bank and revegetate that coastal bank with native plants. So to, the long, long and short answer is yes, it did receive. So the long, long and short answer is yes, it did receive approval.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then Katie, I did forget to ask you to go through the staff's comments on this. Can you summarize those up for us?
So the applicant, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the applicant submitted a cost estimate pursuant to Section 6A 5 of the Protective Zoning Bylaw in the amount of $275,000. The planning board shall review the estimates submitted by the applicant and set the amount for a performance bond not to exceed the full cost of the required site improvements exclusive of the building construction, construction costs, as shown on the approved site development plan. The referral responses, the Conservation Commission voted to approve the project, and it has been continued to October 6th to draft the order of conditions. Buyer department responded with no concerns for the proposed changes. The police department responded with no concerns for the proposed changes. The zoning coordinator responded that the applicant will be heard by the zoning board of appeals on October 14th, 2021. The health department responded that the properties are connected to the CBI wastewater treatment system located off-site. The units are served by sewers running to the wastewater plant. A review of the procedures and policies for the pools at the units will be required to determine if these are considered semi-public pools. They may be required to meet the state regulation regarding swimming pools, which include special purpose pools such as these. We did not receive a response from the Natural Resources Department, and the building commissioner responded that building permits will be required for the construction of the proposed stairway and swimming pools. And that those are all the comments received.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think the thing that we, the board should decide then is the amount of the performance bond on this. The applicant has submitted a amount of construction at $275,000. Is, is there any comments about what we suggest sending this performance bond there?
This is Bob Dubus.
Thank you, Bob.
I was, I was looking at that. The last thing on the list is $75,000 for installation of patios, equipment, plumbing and electrical, and 24 for the plunge pools. I'm assuming that that's going to be the last thing built. So I would say in the range of $80,000, in my estimation, would be a fair amount to hold back, but that's my opinion.
Okay. Any of the other board members like to support that or offer an alternative amount?
Tom Gegen, I would support that amount.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's no objection to that, then what I'll do is the board is inclined to approve the formal site plan. The staff is prepared to following general conditions. And I'll go through these, and then I'll ask for a motion on this. Number one, the physical features and data shown on site plan entitled, plan showing proposed staircase sheet C31.1, and sections and details sheet C31.2, prepared by Coastal Engineering dated June 25th, 2021, and last revised September 1, 2021, represent the approved design and layout of the subject property. Any deviation from the specified use, uses and layout constitutes a violation of planning board approval, unless it is reviewed and approved by the planning board. Number two, the site plan showing approved plunge pool locations dated September 1, 2021, and proposed site improvements prepared by Coastal Engineering dated January 29th, 2019. Certification by a licensed professional that all site work is completed in compliance with the approved plan is required prior to the occupancy of the building. Submission of the performance bond and the amount of, we're setting this at $80,000 pursuant to Section BI A.5 of the Protective Zoning Bylaw. All exterior lining shall be downcast in and shall be designed so as not to eliminate areas off the property. If those conditions, do I have a motion for that approval?
This is Warren Chang, that's our move.
And a second?
Roger Griffin also.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote on this. Warren Chang?
Warren Chang, approved.
Bob Werschafter?
Bob Werschafter, approved.
Thank you, Tom Gegen.
Tom Gegen, approve.
Thank you, Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And Art Spru, I approve the conditions as so noted in the staff draft. I want to, I want to thank you very much, Andrew and your team. Appreciate you listening to the board as we, as we had, held our site visit. It was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
And with that, I think I can turn this back over to Catherine, and she can proceed with our agenda.
Thank you so much, Arthur. So this is Catherine Helfern again. We'll go on to the next item on our agenda. We actually have two public hearings tonight for subdivision plan review, definitive subdivision plan reviews. So before we go to the first one, I do just want to remind the board and the public of our public hearing procedures. So when we begin each public hearing, the first step is that the public notice will be read by the planning board clerk, who is Roger Griffin. Then we'll have a presentation by the applicant. Then the planning board will have the opportunity for questions and comments. Then I will ask for public statements in favor of the application, and then I will read any correspondence into the record. And then after that, we'll ask for public statements opposing the application. And then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal for any opposing statements. Then after that, we'll return for some board comments, any additional board comments or questions. And then if the board is ready, we would take a vote to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations. Once the hearing is closed, there is no further audience participation. It would just, it would just be deliberation by the board, and then the board could vote on the matter. Alternatively, if the board feels that more information is required, et cetera, we can keep the hearing open, and we can continue the hearing, just so, so that that's clear. So those are our procedures for the public hearing. So let's begin. The first matter is 79 Forest Beach Road. And this is, again, a definitive subdivision plan review. And I will ask our clerk, Roger Griffin, to read the public announcement for this matter.
Thank you.
As required by Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81, 81L and 1.0, the planning board, the Chatham, Chatham will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 27th, 2021, at 5:00 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Inn. It's located 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass. In order to consider the following application, this meeting is being conducted with remote participation via Microsoft Teams. Call in number is 508-945-4410. Conference ID number 403727480. Public hearing notice for consideration of a definitive subdivision plan, Alan D. Peralta and Joan M. Peralta for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled definitive subdivision plan 79 Forest Beach Road, South Chatham, Massachusetts, prepared for Alan D. Peralta and Joan M. Peralta, located 79 Forest Beach Road, showing a subdivision of land owned by Alan D. Peralta and Joan M. Peralta, 39 Elm Street, Hangum, Massachusetts, 02018. Plan prepared by East Southeast LLC, July 29th, 2021, and showing two proposed parcels. A copy of the, of the plan and application may be reviewed by request to the Community Development Department at 261 George Ryder Road on weekdays between 7:00 and 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 PM in no time on Friday. Any person who's interested or wish to be heard at the proposed definitive subdivision plan should appear on this date, time, place, designed for the hearing. Roger Griffin, clerk, Chatham Planning Board.
Catherine, you're muted.
Thank you. I was muted, my apologies. So now we go to the presentation by the applicant.
Good afternoon.
Great, please go ahead.
Hi, elder, from the southeast. Mr. Peralta is on the line with me. We were before you last year with a preliminary subdivision plan of this property, where we were talking about constructing a small road coming off of Forest Beach. We had a site visit, we reviewed things, preliminary plan was approved. We later talked to town staff, and we were all in agreement that it would be more beneficial to the safety of the neighborhood by constructing a stub road off of Bobby's Lane. This will better enable emergency vehicles to, to access and turn around when somebody's at the tennis court, or even just if they have to go down the road. The proposal is to create that stub road, and that will provide the necessary frontage for the southerly lot. The northerly lot will be a panhandle. But like with many panhandles, we wish to have shared access from Forest Beach to the lot. As you can see on the top graphical plan, or anybody who's been out there, there's a great hill from, from the existing house down towards the tennis court. And the Peralts are more interested in constructing at the higher point rather than the lower. There are two specimen trees located at the bottom of the hill near Bobby's Lane, and the proposal is to build right up to them, but we'd make every effort not to impact the roots. One is a large spruce tree. The other is an odd double oak, where a second oak came in at an angle, and they grew together. In interest of preserving the trees, they, they're doing everything that they can. There's a little bit of pavement that will be going in at the bottom of Bobby's Hill. That will tie into the existing paved road for Judy's Lane. The remainder of Bobby's Lane will remain a dirt road. We're proposing a drainage system that will adequately, adequately dispose of more runoff than generated by what we're improving, but we know that it's inadequate for the entire area. The drainage in Jensen, Judy's, Bobby's, there is no drainage. I mean, it's basically a hole. So we're taking care of what we're creating. The existing access to the house is going to remain the modified stone. This plan works for the applicant. He had a great desire to preserve the historic home, which has now been renovated, and he did a very good job with it. And this will enable him to construct a new home on the southerly lot. I know it was mentioned at the preliminary plan hearing. If he had taken out the historic home, he could have put three lots here, but he didn't want to overdevelop the area. With that, if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Thad. So let's go through the board, and if you have comments or questions for Thad. Art Spru?
This is Art Spru. Okay, so I'm a, I'm a little bit confused here because I saw the letter that came in, and it defined, it looked like there was a reconstruction of the excess roadway into Lot 5. I am confused on what work was done there, and do you have a plan of what was done so that the board can see how that varied from any discussions we have or anything else? Right now, I don't see a plan about what was proposed there. And I'm sort of surprised that anything was built before, it came before our board for a review and approval of it. Can you first comment on that before I continue?
Sure. The existing driveway that has been servicing this lot for 90 years was regraded and restoned back to its more or less original condition. I mean, it was a decent driveway when we were out there. It's now been just repaired.
So it wasn't widened, it wasn't relocated or anything? It appeared like it was changed in its configuration.
Possibly a bit, but what, the parking area would have been reconfigured if anything.
Okay. I think it's important that that is documented as part of the submission on this, because it's part of the access that you're asking for on this. Are you, are you providing an access to, from the panhandle to Lot 6?
Yes, we are.
And are you going to provide any kind of a surface treatment associated with that? I'd like to see a plan associated with that is, what's, what's the width? What's the materials that you're proposing use, the cross section? So I think that, that needs to be addressed. The other thing I see on here is you're showing utilities that's in that 20-foot strip there. Now, if I recall, when we were all out there, that's where all, there's a significant number of trees. And some questions were raised by our board members about, in concern about removal of those trees. If you're proposing to put underground utilities in there, how many of those trees are going to be impacted by that, those underground utilities?
The proposal is to put the water line, and it's a two-inch water main that would be going in to tie in the water main from Forest Beach to the water main on Bobby's Lane. And the proposal is to keep those outside of that tree line.
Well, that's not the way they're showing them on here. You're showing the gas line right in the middle of that, and that's probably exactly where all those trees are. So without knowing exactly where you're going to be putting that gas line, and if you're going to start removing trees, I think you, you owe it to our board to make a definitive statement that you're going to remove these number of trees or the excess.
Well, the proposal is to not remove any trees.
Okay, then is that all right if we put that on as a condition, then? I'm just trying to explore what you, what you, what you're saying, and whether you're going to agree to it. I'm not against you moving, removing some of the trees. I need to understand what trees are being removed. I know that we're, we were talking that there could have been upwards of 25 trees removed there. I don't think a board was interested in having that much removal done. So I'm not against what you're proposing here, but I, I think there needs to be a lot, a little bit more clarity on this, because if we approve this plan as shown, you're going to be removing trees.
I wouldn't want to condition on it, because the condition of those, those hemlock trees along the boundary, they may be removed or replaced in the future, and I wouldn't want a condition to try and keep those trees. They're not in the best of shape, or at least they don't look, look like they are. So to put a condition on there to maintain trees that, as long as a buffer is in there, and the neighbors are in agreement with the buffer, and if I may, Mr. Peralta? And if I may, Mr. Peralta has his hand raised.
Yes, this is Catherine. Mr. Peralta, please go ahead if you have a response to this concern.
Sure, thank you. I I do agree with the point that Thad raised that there would be a minimum amount done. In fact. I think part of the reason that we are now doing the the turning T on Bobby's Lane. Is to minimize the impact on the existing right of way into that site. It's less extensive than was proposed under the preliminary plan. There are some trees, if you remember being out there. The right of way that is preexisted, it predated the the house at number eighty-three. The grade there is slightly lower than the buffer between our property and the Kelsey's property. So they may, there were a few trees right on the edge of a slope that may have to be removed, but they're not the bulk of the trees between our property and the Kelsey's property. So the ones that are on the slope, quite honestly, a little precarious right now because of the fact they're on a slope. And they're not that substantial. And the goal would be to have the utilities as, you know, as much within that right of way as is possible. So our our goal is the same. And we've talked to the Kelseys and the Dalys, our immediate neighbors. Of our intent to minimize that. So I understand Mr. Spru's comment of maybe delineating what they are, and I guess we could maybe do that, but. This plan is less intrusive than the one that was there before. And one of the major issues, if you remember. Is a fairly substantial spruce tree that is close to Forest Beach Road. That wouldn't be touched at all. So the ones that are. Really in the heart of that twenty-foot area would not be touched, which provides a significant buffer between us and the Kelsey's.
Yeah. I I'm I'm in concurrence with all your statements there, but I'm looking at the plans and the plans are showing a gas utility that's going to go right through that tree. So and that's the reason why I'm raising this concern. It I'm only going by what the plan said because when we approve this. It's going to be based on the plans that were submitted. I think there needs to be a clarification on this point. On the utilities. Maybe there is to be identification of a buffer buffer strip there. On panhandle entrance and that that'll help and that. The gas line will be so many feet off of the property line and in this side. There's no definition of what is being done with these utilities to protect those trees. So. I think there needs to be a clarity by the applicant associated with that, or we can define that as part of some conditions.
Okay. Arthur, this is Catherine. I just wanted to say. We can define it as conditions. We can also. We can also vote to continue the matter and request more information. As part of a subdivision, a formal. Subdivision review, we do often ask for very specific information regarding the trees. Which trees will be cut, which trees will be preserved? And, you know, actually which individual trees are to be marked on the plan. And so it does need to be clarified. I also, if I could just step in. And Thad, could you just clarify for me and for the rest of the board and the public? On the plan that's shown that we're all seeing on the screen. Can you show? It wasn't completely clear to me where is the existing. Road access? And are you proposing to change that in any way? For the subdivision plan or and is that existing as it is now? You you said you've improved it. And you might have changed it a little bit, but we need to know. You know, exactly where it is. And is that what's going to stay?
That is the proposal is to maintain a stone driveway. A common driveway through the three properties.
Okay, and that's what's shown on this plan right now, and you're not planning to change it.
There would be the additional driveway heading to the south to. Two lots six within the easement.
All right, great. Okay, that clarifies that for me. I'm sorry, Arthur, did you have more points?
I I guess the the only other one I have is the cross section detail associated on Pierce Path. That's that's inconsistent with the. A type A. Road cross section. Is there a reason why you wouldn't? Do the type A road road cross section? And that's the minimalist one, the minimalist one that we have in our rules and regulations.
Could you tell me where it varies from the type A?
Well, there's an inch and a half top course, two and a half inch base course, and a six-inch dense grating crushed dome. That's the cross section. That's the minimalist one that we have in our rules and regulations for. A small subdivision as you're submitting here.
I will.
I mean, you're not far off from it, but you are. So I would. Ask that you take a look back at that and. I'd find that as the cross section material for Pierce Path. I I that's all I have for for this at this point, Catherine. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Warren Chang, questions and comments for Thad?
Yes, this is Warren. Thad, I have only one question, and that is if you could. Help me understand the use of this stub road that is being put in on Pierce Pierce Path. It's access to the site, but there also seems to be retaining walls and so on. So is it merely just a turnaround? Or is it meant to really provide some sort of appropriate access, necessary access to the site?
So the proposal is just a turnaround for Bobby's Lane. And the access is being proposed from the door.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. I don't have any other comments.
And and if I may, I can point to several other subdivisions where a similar alternative access has been proposed.
No, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Warren. Bob Wurshafter.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. And Bob Dubis?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, I have I have some questions about. I see that. You were going to give. A driveway easement over lot five. To lot six, which which was fine, but I now I see that all the utilities are going. In that easement. And I I see utilities, but I don't see utility easement there. So in other words, from the last time you were here, you haven't changed anything but put a turnaround at the bottom of of Bobby's Lane. Which doesn't do a damn bit of good, as far as I can see, to the house. All you're doing is glorifying and not widening the road as we wanted it. Without trees, we didn't. We didn't want the access. For all the utilities and everything through. Forest Beach Road. You could you could have an easement to drive. To lot six. And if you gave yourself an easement, you you wouldn't need a subdivision. Your subdivision should come through Bobby's Lane. With an easement to drive over lot five. Instead of making a whole new road, which which now you're saying you gave yourself an easement, you don't need it. You may have an access down below on Bobby's Lane. But you have lots that doesn't go anywhere. All this is a turnaround for a fire truck or a car. It doesn't doesn't help that lot get to the building at all. There's no driveway, never will be, never was going to be. So we're just looking at some hashed over plan that has a turnaround for a fire truck that probably would. Who knows if it would go there or not? They could go down there without even the turnaround. They go down there anyway. So I I I don't think all the ducks are in a row on this. Thank you.
And if I may, when one has a right of access, one has a right to install utilities. So we don't need a separate utility easement. There is a twenty-foot easement defined for the water main for the town.
There's a twenty easement for a water main. Well, the water main's not two inches. It happens to be an eight-inch to be a water line, a water main.
It's tying into two.
I don't want to. I don't want to argue. I just I just don't think that that you you're trying to snowball us is what I think. That's my opinion. Take it or leave it.
If I may, this was a suggestion by the town planner and town staff after the approval of the preliminary plan.
This is Catherine. Thank you, Thad. Thank you, Bob. Let's go on to Roger Griffin. Do you have questions, comments for Thad?
Yeah, I want to. No, I mean, I'm here. I guess I. I felt the same way is odd. I guess. I don't, you know, if we are. If we are going to take down, we are going to have to take down some trees. We realize that. And I think I'm even more concerned because there are some specimens there that look like they're probably going to come down anyway. And I hadn't seen that. I hadn't. I never. I wasn't out to the site business, so I don't know what we had, what what was talked about before. But I guess, yeah, I guess I feel I would like to see. Get a little more of an insight as to what trees we know, tag, which ones are going to be coming down, which ones we know we're going to be able to keep. And I think I'm just more concerned which ones we know we, which ones can we? You know, we're approving a lot of these small subdivisions and sometimes what we think we're going to be able to do, we can't do. And then. When they're down, it's too late. And, you know, we're putting our, you know. Putting our putting our name on it. But I guess I I agree with that. I think we'd like to get a little more of a handle on that on that situation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Roger. And Tom Gagan.
Tom Gagan, Tom Gagan, I have no additional questions other than that, which has been brought up by board members.
Okay, thank you, Tom. This is Catherine. Before we go on to public statements in favor of the application, I'd just like to make a few comments. First of all, from the staff report, I just wanted to review. What the issues were that came up in the preliminary site. Subdivision plan review. And those were the issues of drainage. The waivers that were requested, which now are fewer waivers are requested. The trees, the removal of trees and planting of trees. And also the road layout. Also. I did just want to. Remind the board and the public that there the applicant is requesting waivers specifically. On this formal subdivision. Plan. And the first one is for the roundings. Because there is insufficient room for roundings. And since speeds are expected to be minimal. It's proposed that there's no need for the roundings. And also they're requesting a waiver regarding buffer strips. And again, the reason being there is insufficient room for buffer strips. And the increase of safety of the existing road is the trade-off. I would just like to comment that, as I recall. What the, based on. And this is to my recollection, when we did the site visit. What the board wanted to see was actually to see an alternative. Proposal, an alternative proposal of access to lot, is it lot six? From Bobby's Lane and. Right now, as I think Arthur and others have noted. It's not really access. It's just a turnaround. And the rest of the plan has stayed basically the same. So I'm not sure that that actually addresses all the concerns that came up from the site visit. I do want to just go through the referral responses. From the staff report also before we go to public statements. Zoning Board of Appeals. Approval from Z B A is not required. H B D C approval is not required from H B D C. Fire Department, the application was reviewed and no issues with the proposal were found. Police Department and Traffic Safety. We have not yet received a response. Department of Natural Resources, no response as yet. Department of Public Works, no response as yet. Conservation Commission, this is not located within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. And Board of Health. Reviewed the proposed subdivision plan on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the Board of Health recommended approval. So with that being said, let's go to the next part of the public hearing, which is. Public statements in favor of the application. And Christina, could you let me know if you see any hands raised? I don't think I have any correspondence.
I see Alan. Alan Peralta's hand is up.
All right. And this is the applicant, but. You may go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I tried to raise my hand before you went to the section, but. I just wanted to reiterate for clarification for clarification. Thad's point that the idea of the turning T. Was proposed at the at a meeting we had with planning staff on the twenty-fifth of September. It was in the chronology I provided you. So. There isn't any subterfuge there. It's it's really a case of that was what was recommended by the. Planning staff was that I I think they thought that would be advantageous. And the other issue as to utilities, whether they are shown or not. For what it's worth, there is no gas that I'm aware of in Bobby's Lane. So some of the utilities would come off of Forest Beach. And would in fact be closer. But one of the things that did come up with Mr. Temple was linking the water line from Forest Beach to Bobby's Lane. For so it would be for better pressure for the whole area. I just wanted to clarify that. This was not something Thad came up with on his own. It was recommended. In a conversation that we had on September twenty-fifth with planning staff in the D P W. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next part is to read correspondence. I do not believe that I have any correspondence. Katie, can, is there some correspondence that needs to be read?
No, Madam Chair, I actually had my hand up. I just wanted to respond to.
Sure.
And so the the applicant is correct that planning staff, Ellie Sabatino, our principal planner. Had some concerns about providing the frontage and access coming off of Forest Beach Road because it was going over private property. And that was a major concern. To her, even though it was through an easement, it was creating a way over private property. The D P W director also had some concerns about that access point. And so. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that this. Change in the plan was recommended or initiated by. Our our principal planner, Riley Sabatino, and our D P W director, Tom Temple. And I was included in that meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. It wasn't something. That the applicant was trying to change after the preliminary plan. It was just, there was a concern. Just about the, again, the access over the easement and creating frontage for a lot. Through private property. So I just wanted to make that clear to the board members.
Yes, thank you, Katie. This is Catherine. Yeah, I don't. I don't. I wasn't suggesting that. What I was suggesting is what I think the issue is, is this is access, but it's essentially. A turnaround as as I'm understanding it, and please, everyone, correct me if I'm wrong. But it's still leaving the main access to the southern lot. Coming off of Forest Beach and going through that proposed driveway. And I believe that what the board was wanting to see was not just a turnaround there, but that actually. The access to the southern lot would be off of Bobby's Lane. To avoid. Some of the complications that come through. With having the access off of Forest Beach and the driveway for the southernmost lot. So that's what I understood the board's concern. We actually. Wanted to see more done there. Arthur, Bob Dubis, do you do you remember our discussions on that? Please, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Anyone else on the board?
This is Bob Dubis. Catherine, you're right. We. We didn't. We didn't feel it was sufficient room enough to cut everything out, take all the trees down, that'd still be a banking on. On this, the easterly side, I guess, I don't know. And and the grading is a little different. Plus, they're going over somebody else's property. They have an easement. But they're going, they're intruding on somebody else's property with with a new road, all the utilities and everything. We we. Express that there is no reason they can't take and make a driveway around the outside. Many people do. I can tell you plenty of places where they where they do to get where they want, or they could. they do to get where they want. Or they could get everything they want that way and just give them, give them a driveway easement, just an easement to drive over and park in the yard on lot six through lot five. But to put, they're making a regular subdivision road like they were before, and they're not, they're not taking enough trees down to make it, they don't want an edge on it or buffer zone. So I don't know how they're going to get the width they want and, and a water main and gas line. And I would imagine that our, our subdivision rules say to bury the wires, electric wires. And, and are they, since they're doing this, are they going to put a sewer connection down the road or not? These are things that we were wondering at that point. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Yes, that's what I remember too. And so, yes, and Arthur?
Catherine, I think Bob summed it up pretty well. That's what I recall on this. I think the whole idea of, if you take a look at the plans, the way they're showing it, that driveway is essentially outside even the easement. So it's not an appropriate access the way it's, way it's been shown. So I think that issue has to be corrected before we advance this along. Otherwise, we're approving an access to a lot outside of an easement area even, let alone a right-of-way width. So, so that's, I think that's going outside of what, what our authority is associated with granting subdivision approval. So I'm in concurrence with Bob's recollection on all of this. And he's right about other, other utilities that are going to be coming through there. You're going to, eventually, there's going to have to be a sewer line that goes through there. That means the minimum sewer line is going to go up there is at least a six inch and maybe a six, an eight inch lead going up there to serve those properties. How is that gonna, how is that going to happen? Everything in, we have to assume everything in town is going to be sewed. And if that, if we're not going to allow for that and prevent that as part of this plan, I think that the DPW is going to come back and lean on us later on for actually doing this without taking that into consideration. So I think there needs to be some homework done on this before we advance this further. Because right now, I don't, I don't think that this is a viable plan as, as, as submitted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Arthur. And yes, that's what I remember too, that these were all the concerns of the board. And so, great. So now, let's move on to the next step in the public hearing, and that would be public statements in opposition of the application. I have nothing in writing, to the best of my knowledge. I do see a hand raised. Christina, can you see who that is?
Yes. Mitch Fishman.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to identify myself. I'm Mitch Fishman, and I own the property at 34 Bobby's Lane. I think on that map, if you raise it up a tiny bit, you'll see my corner property directly opposite that trapezoid area. And I guess I came prepared to make a couple of comments, but the conversation actually led me to another comment, which I thought I would say initially. And that is, if you've ever done a site visit to the tennis court area, which is the Bobby's Lane link at the corner there, you'll see a lot of cars, you'll see a lot of activity, and you'll see how that relates to this trapezoid area. It'd be a very difficult place to in fact have access. And I think I compliment the project owner for not really wanting that to happen. Hold on a second, I just lost it. So to me, that's a, that's a difficult location. And you mentioned the sewer line. I mean, you'd have to start pumping uphill if you can't come in from Forest Beach. So that's, that was sort of a side comment. The real thing I wanted to talk about, and I guess if you could blow that map up, a trifle in that drainage area, that might be helpful. A little, yeah, a little higher. Yeah. So if you see that area, that's, you know, that, that is a, a new cutout for a retaining wall at the top, and that's what those round rocks or whatever it is, I assume maybe three or four feet, who knows. And then you see this trapezoid area, and it has in it the drainage, it has in it a, a place where the drainage happens. And it extends over Bobby's Lane. Now Bobby's Lane at that point, I guess is a private way, but it extends over Bobby's Lane. And I think that's critical because when you look at that drainage location that the engineer has located, it actually is in an area that would start retaining sheet drainage or, or sheeting that happens from the tennis court. And if you've been out at the tennis court, you know that that's all asphalt, a basketball court next to it, which is all asphalt. The sheeting from that area is fairly significant. And almost every storm event, from small to what happened a couple of weeks ago, the area at the bottom of Judy's and Bobby's Lane becomes a large cesspool area, or becomes like a pooling area. And of course, when rain is more significant, you could actually float a little boat in, which we did with our kids when they were younger. So over the years, this area has gotten much worse. And I started to look at this drainage location that's being proposed. And I had a discussion this afternoon with the project engineer to try to understand what's going on. And in fact, what I found was that this drainage is actually insufficient to actually bring all the water that comes down from the tennis court, that's the town's responsibility, and other water that's in the area. It really mostly just retains, you know, the hardscape in that area and whatever comes down from the hillside. So there's a couple of points I want to make about that. One, this is an opportunity for the town to actually participate in improving their own dereliction of duty by not having sufficient drainage that drains from the tennis court. They've never had sufficient drainage. And secondly, it's an opportunity for the neighbors to actually eliminate some of the pooling that occurs at the bottom. And so I would say, one of the things that might be helpful is perhaps the developer could enlarge on that drainage as mitigation and do something about that. And of course, you know, it is true that, you know, perhaps some activities in that area has contributed to it. Paving Judy's Lane probably didn't help, which happened, I think, a few years ago, not by me, but I guess other butters. But that area is really in bad shape, and I'm worried it'll get worse with this. But more important is an opportunity to do something there. And the final point I'd make, which I think several planning board members have raised, is what the hell is the purpose of this turnaround area anyway? Now, I recognize you, you know, that you have to have frontage and there's some legal requirements, but it doesn't seem to be related at all to what would be development on that site. And it leads to a drainage that's insufficient to meet the needs of that area. So I would say at a minimum that the engineer and the developer should go back and rethink that area and come back with something that would actually benefit the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Is it Mr. Fishman? Yes, thank you very much. Are there any other public statements in opposition of the application? And Christina, please let me know if you see any hands raised.
I do not see any more hands raised.
Thank you Christina. So then, the applicant has the opportunity for rebuttal, if you'd like to make any points in response to any of the, would you identify yourself? I heard someone request to speak, but we are in rebuttal. Does the applicant, Thad, or Mr. Pearl, would you like to make any points?
No, wait a minute.
Just a minute, please. My name is Howard Jay, and I'm the owner of 35 Bobby's Lane, which is across, across from Mr. Fishman.
All right. Please go ahead.
I would just, I'd like to, I reinforce the idea of doing something about the drainage. But when I was down there two weeks ago, and I think it was two weeks ago on Thursday, when the storm, one of the last storm was hitting, we could actually have a river running down the entire length of Bobby's Lane. And the water is all coming down from either the tennis court or from Judy's Lane. The rest of it seems to be held in because of natural drainage in the sand. So I would like to see if there was something about that, can be done about that. And I am no engineer, and so I defer to some of the comments Mr. Fishman made. But the other thing that, this whole idea of a turnaround seems to me, and I've been there for 46 years, either my ex-wife or myself, and first of all, we do have the tennis court. It's a public tennis court. The town has never done anything about making that road accessible, but people tend to use it. And people turn around to the, if you're looking at the tennis court, to the left of the entranceway, they turn, they back in there, they park there, and they turn around there. And in fact, the town trucks turn around there by either backing up Judy's Lane or backing into that particular area. It seems to me that any, any additional asphalt, just to make a turnaround, is really unnecessary. So if you're considering changing the plan, you might think about that.
Considering changing, you might think about that. Considering changing.
Thank you. Could you, thank you. Thank, thank you very much. And could you mute your phones now? Because we are getting some feedback. Thank you very much. So I'll just hear, are there any other public statements in opposition of this application? And Christina, again, please tell me if you see hands raised.
I do not see any more hands raised.
All right. Then let's move on to rebuttal. And Thad and Mr. Pearl, if you'd like to make any comments in response to the comments that have come up. Thank you.
Thad Aldridge, the drainage has been designed to handle more runoff than what is going to be created. An overflow pipe has been added to it that'll be capped, with the intention that if the neighbors, if the town wanted to expand that, they could. Now, Mr. Pearl's easement includes Bobby's Lane, it does not include Judy's Lane. There are no rights to install drainage on the town property unless the town grants those. So he's really added everything that he needs to, and everything that he can, without getting into a substantial disruption of the entire side of his property and the removal of even more trees. The question with the sewer, the adjacent grade next to the existing home is elevation 38. The grade at the street is 45. So you have a seven-foot elevation difference. And unless they're going to put that main in the street down 14 feet, there's not going to be gravity coming from this site to get out to the street. And there's enough room between the proposed gas main and the property line, or gas line, gas service, and the property line to accommodate a, a forced sewer line. And if they're pushing for force, or if they're going to use force, then lot six can go down Bobby's Lane just as easily as it could go back up towards Forest Beach Road. There is an opportunity for the town and the neighbors to resolve their drainage issues, but that's really up to the town and the neighbors to do. This kickstarts the entire thing. It gives them a catch basin that things will drain into, and then they have the opportunity to increase it. The driveway that shows outside of the easement, the easement was poorly defined on the, on the earlier land court plan. We presumed it at one rod wide, and it's really as, it's a shared driveway that's under agreement between the property owners. Otherwise, we will complete a driveway design, and we'll show the trees out here that we're not taking down.
Okay. Thank you Thad. And I did see, Mr. Pearl, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I did. Thank you. The other thing I guess I want to add to the point about the new access to lot six, I think the board has to keep in mind that even, you know, post-subdivision, the lot five is going to be over 30,000 square feet, and lot six is going to be over 40,000 square feet, in an area where the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. So it's not that we're really seriously encroaching on anything. I walk my dog through this area all the time. For the sake of precedent, there's a lot of shared driveways in Chatham. And I guess in some ways, the merit is that there's less asphalt, and we're not even doing asphalt in these drives. I think Thad can come up with something that satisfies Mr. Spru and Mr. Dubis, at least on the upper side, as far as where the utilities would be and where the drive, the gravel drive coming across that way would be. I don't really think it's going to significantly impact, even that existing house at 79 that I've restored, is going to have quite a setback from that drive that's there. And it's just, it's similar to the drive that's in front of Mrs. Daley's house now. And she and Mr. Kelsey, who live next door, are fine with this concept. So I think we can tweak something and hopefully provide some more clarity. But I do want to reiterate what Ms. Donovan said the same thing, is the idea of the turning key was the town approaching us. It wasn't something that Thad concocted. It was something that was recommended. I understand there's ramifications with it, and we'll certainly look at those. But this wasn't something he proposed out of the blue. It was something that was proposed, and I think we can work it through. And as Thad said, there are precedent for it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pearl. This is Catherine. And again, perhaps I didn't mean to suggest what seems everybody's thinking was suggested more. It was, as I mentioned, and I believe Mr. Dubis and Mr. Spru agreed with this memory of mine, that when we did the site visit, the board wanted to see if the access to lot six could actually be off of Bobby's Lane rather than Forest Beach, because of the issues that have come up, that the current access that you show is, is quite thin, quite slender, and not adequate. And if you're going to widen that, it does mean the removal, or it could mean the removal of quite a bit of trees. And so all those issues of where are the utilities, how big is the, how wide should the access be from Forest Beach, if that is your only access and you don't have access from Bobby's Lane. And then we need to know precisely what trees are going to be removed, and where the utilities are going to be placed more precisely. So, so I think that issue just needs to be resolved. If it's absolutely not possible to have the access from Bobby's Lane just due to the topography, et cetera, and you have to do it from Forest Beach, I think we need more information. And we need to make sure that that's adequate. And I'm going to ask the other board members to comment on my comments, especially Arthur and Bob Dubis. Do you want to add anything or correct anything?
Catherine, this is, this is Art Spru. I agree with your direction associated with this. I have a couple other things to throw into the mix. Thad talked about, Thad talked about the, the sewer probably having to be pumped out, and that's understandable. I mean, you do what you have to do in order to get a service, but there is going to be a requirement that everybody connect up. So he's saying that that's going to be between the gas line and, and, and the 20-foot access line. That means, pretty much, my picture says, everything in that 20-foot strip is going to be gone. There's no trees there now. So let's deal with reality here. And if that's going to be- So let's deal with reality here, and if that's going to be what happens, then let's propose it that way. And if that means there needs to be some mitigation with some trees and buffers along that edge there, because that's what the panhandle calls for, associated with narrow regulations, and that's what we do. The second thing, just a clarity, Bobby's lane and Judy's lane is, is a private way. So therefore, it's not the town's responsibility to actually make improvements. There would be the property owners associated that bought up to that. So if, if there is something that the town needs to do associated with the tennis court, that's one thing, but certainly improvements along a private way is not the town's responsibility. So I just want to provide that clarity. And that's my understanding of our jurisdiction associated with previous private ways. That's all I can do.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. Any other comments from the board?
This is Bob Dubus, Catherine. I kind of agree with, I kind of agree with that. We, we need to see a little more detail on how we can go about this. I, when I first looked at this this time, I thought they just gave them an easement for a driveway to access the top of the hill, bringing everything in the other way, and also having another way to get in, whether it be a garage under or something, not a full-blown subdivision road, which isn't a full-blown subdivision road, which it's supposed to be. So let's, I think we should work a little more on this.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other comments from the board? We are in the section of the public hearing procedures for board comments. So any other board members with any additional comments?
Warren, Bob Wirthsafter, Roger, Tom. If there are none, then we do need to decide as a board how to proceed. At this point, we could either close the hearing and enter formal deliberations, and then we would formally vote on whether to approve the subdivision plan as submitted, or we could keep the hearing open and continue the matter until our next board meeting or future board meeting, and request additional information from the applicant. As chair, that's what I'm hearing from the board, is that we need more information and more work, and that probably what we would want to do is not close the hearing, but keep the public hearing open.
Madam Chair?
Additional, yes.
I would make that motion for you, if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead. Make the motion. Yes, and that we're requesting more information and more detailed plans from the board, and a resolution of the issue of, of what is the access, having adequate access to the subdivision. So, yes, so the motion is there to keep the hearing open and to continue this matter with more information requested from the applicant. Do I have a second to that motion?
Art Spru, I second that.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, I, I approve the motion.
And I'm just going to interrupt at this point to see if I neglected, and I'm going to confer with Katie. Do we need also in the motion to set a definite date to continue the hearing?
Yes, Madam Chair, you should continue the hearing to a date certain, and we perhaps ask the applicant, our next meeting that would be available would be October twenty-fifth, and after that, it would be November eighth.
All right, so my apologies to everyone. So I'm going to ask Thad and Mr. Pearl, would October twenty-fifth or November eighth be a better date certain for you to continue the public hearing?
October twenty-fifth would be best.
All right, so I will propose that we amend, we amend the motion to continue this public hearing to the October twenty-fifth meeting of the planning board. And, yes, and I'm going to ask Bob Dubus, do you agree to that amendment? And Arthur, you seconded, do you both agree to that amendment?
Bob Dubus says, are you sure you have the right date? I thought it was the twenty-eighth, or am I mistaken?
I think it's the twenty-fifth, but let me check. It's the twenty-fifth, that's the Monday.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, all right, so let's do the roll call vote with.
Yeah, Catherine, just a clarity on that, too. That means the applicant would have their information available to us by the sixteenth of October. My understanding that correctly is that's our usually process and procedure, so we have time to review it, correct? So does, does Thad, does that, can Thad confirm that he can meet that as a deadline? Otherwise, we'll have to continue again.
Understood.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second that motion again, that we continue to the October twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Arthur. So I'm, let's just start the roll call vote again. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
And Bob Wirthsafter?
Bob Wirthsafter, I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helper, and I also approve that we act as, per the motion, that this public hearing will be continued to the October twenty-fifth meeting of the planning board. So thank all of you, thank you, Thad, thank you, Mr. Pearl. We will go on to the next public hearing. All right, the next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. I won't go through the steps of the public hearing again, but I will, we will start with the public notice to be read by the clerk, Roger Griffin, and this is in regards to seven seventy-six Main Street and Seventy Depot Road, also a sub, definitive subdivision plan review. So Roger, could you read the public notice, please?
Public hearing notice for consideration of a definitive subdivision plan. Chatham Productions LLC, for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Plan Seven Seventy-Six Main Street in Seventy Depot Road, Chapter Productions, zero-two-six-four, prepared for Chatham Productions LLC, located seven seventy-six Main Street and Seventy Depot Road, showing a subdivision of land owned by Chatham Productions LLC, twelve-thirty-four Chestnut Street, Suite Two-Eleven, Newton, Massachusetts, oh-two-four-six-four. Plan is prepared by Outermost Land Survey, Inc. and Clock Engineering LLC, dated July first, two thousand twenty-one, and showing five proposed lots. Copy of the plan and application reviewed by request of the community development department located two sixty-one George Rider Road, weekdays between the hours of seven and four P.M., Monday through Thursday, L.T.M. on Friday. Who wishes to be heard in the proposed definitive subdivision plan should be, should appear on that date, time and place designed for the.
Catherine, clear.
Thank you, Roger. So next is the presentation by the applicant. Mr. Clark, are you presenting, or your agent?
David Clark here, from Clark Engineering, on behalf of Greg Clark and Outermost Land Survey. As stated, this is a five-lot subdivision. This is the old Montmorey Theater property. There's a, currently a commercial use and a residential use associated with the property. Obviously, the old theater, the old theater and the dwelling out by the Main Street will remain. That is shown as Lot One on, on the subdivision plan. After the, the subdivision does not create a non-conformity on Lot One in that the sufficient land area remaining to comply with the site coverage requirements of the bylaw. There is a, a platform off the rear of the theater building that'll be removed so that that structure will comply with the new setback, or the new property line. There is two structures on Lot One that will be removed. One is very close to the Westerly property line, that'll be removed, eliminating a non-conformity on the property, as well as the, another shed located directly east of, of the, the previous structure I mentioned. The remainder of the property, there are two or three residential structures existing. One is currently shown on Lot Two, the other one is on Lot Three, and then there is the dwelling out on Depot Road. So those three structures would be removed as part of this. To create the requisite frontage for the four rear lots, we're proposing to construct a road, Annabelle Lane. The road meets all the planning board's rules and regulations for width of pavement, width of the right-of-way, and the buffer strip to abutting properties. We're showing on the plan and profile and the typical detail plan, the installation of public utilities, and the subdivision will have electricity, communications, water, and sewer. Sewer is available both on Depot Road and Route Twenty-eight. We are choosing to go towards Depot Road to avoid disturbance of Route Twenty-eight. It's a shorter run, we can make it by gravity. So all four lots will be served by municipal sewer. Provided drainage calculations, both pursuant to the town regulations, and also included a drainage report that's been prepared in conformance with the Massachusetts stormwater policy. Although the town of Chatham hasn't adopted the policy, and there's no requirement under our bylaw to adhere to it, this property does, will, the project will disturb more than one acre of land due to the Oyster Pond. So there is a direct path from this property to the Oyster Pond for stormwater if it is not mitigated on-site. So that report spells out what's required under the stormwater pa, policy, and how this project meets the performance standards of the state stormwater policy. I've also provided an erosion control plan, which is typically not provided for a subdivision in Chatham. But again, because of the stormwater policy, it's required. So we're proposing mitigation measures to ensure that, that runoff stays on the site as well as sediment. So there are a number of best management practices proposed for the road construction. The two major ones is the gravel entrance off of, off of Depot Road, so that trucks don't track sediment onto the road. And the, the second is, prior to vegetation being reestablished, we're providing swales along the side of the road to capture stormwater and infiltrate it, so sediment doesn't get into the catch basins before the side slopes are revegetated. And there are a couple other best management practice, creating swales so that runoff does not get onto the budding properties, as well as a detail for slope stabilizations. So the, the road construction requires a, a cut of material coming down from Depot Road, and those side slopes will be stabilized with erosion control fabric, so that we don't see washouts during a rain event, or a major rain event. As far as the lots themselves, the lots conform to the zoning bylaw, they all have the requisite frontage, except Lot Four, which is a panhandle lot under your regulations. The topographic plan shows that the required shape circle can be placed in each of those lots, so they comply, comply with the, the shape requirement of the zoning bylaw. And that's about it. Be happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you, Thad. Before we go to board questions, I just wanted to mention a couple of things from the staff report, if I might. I just, and the staff report was wonderfully thorough, as always. Staff report points out that during our preliminary review, these are the concerns that the planning board brought up, parking, drainage, buffer strips, tree removal, the road layout, and sidewalks. I just wanted to remind the board of some of the concerns that came up. And then I wanted to just go through our referral responses. First of all, approval from the zoning board of appeals will be required. Secondly, HBDC, approval from HBDC will be required for the new construction. Approval from HBDC has been granted for the demolition of five of the structures on site. The only structure not reviewed for demolition is the wooden platform shown on Lot Five, and which will be required, review will be required. Fire Department, the application was reviewed and no issues with the proposal were found. Police Department and Traffic Safety Committee, to date, we have not yet received a response. Department of Natural Resources, to date, no response. And Department of Public Works, we've not yet received a response. Conservation Commission, this location is not within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. And Board of Health has, has reviewed the proposed subdivision on September thirteenth and has recommended approval. So that's just reviewing some of the points in the staff report, and with that, let's go on to board questions and comments. Yes, Mr. Gagin?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, I, I think it behooves the board, for public record purposes only, that a declaration of the relationship between Clock Engineering and the applicant, who also happens to be Clock, if we could have that on public record as to what that relationship is, please.
Mr. Clark, Mr. David Clark, would you care to answer Mr. Gagin's question?
I don't think it's appropriate question, but Greg Clark wants to answer it, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Greg Clark?
Yes, there is no, no relationship, other than business relationship between myself and Clock Engineering.
Right, thank you very much. All right, so let's go on with board questions and comments. Art Spru, please go ahead.
Catherine, I, I have quite a few comments and questions, and I thought it might be good if, if I went later on and let the other board members give their first pass on this, because it, it could, could take some time to get into the nitty-gritties of some of the things that I have.
All right. Why don't we go on to Warren, then?
No, this is Warren Chain. I have multiple comments and interspersed in those, there are probably some questions. I tried to reduce it to writing to take as little time as possible. But here goes. I say, when the concept of developing the rear of the theater property to generate the funds needed to repair, restore, maintain, and operate the Montmorey Theater, no one was more supportive than I to see a proposal that would ensure the continued operating of the theater without rehashing the intervening events. For me, the petitioner has shown his true colors by his actions. There's no mention of plans to restore or ensure the continued operation of the theater in this current proposal. The proposal requires demolition of the theater's auxiliary buildings, including the unmentioned exquisite outdoor rehearsal stage, shown only as a, an outdoor wood platform. And for me, loss of these supporting structures raises serious doubts about the ongoing viability of the theater, even if the remaining theater buildings were fully restored. Given the historic and cultural importance of the theater to Chatham, I feel strongly that no subdivision of the site should be considered unless and until a plan for the entire site is presented that provides assurance. that provides assurances acceptable to those most familiar with the theater's operational history that it can reopen and return to its place as an historic and cultural jewel valued by every resident and visitor. That said, I have specific questions, comments regarding this current proposal. I've seen a lot of feedback, but I can't put myself on mute, so.
Yes, this is Catherine, I'm just going to ask everyone else to put themselves on mute and disable their videos if they're not speaking. And that should also help the feedback, thank you. Go ahead, Warren.
All right, so the specific comments and questions would be, it appears that single-family residences are being proposed with general business setbacks of 15 feet on the sides and 25 feet on the front. I do not see in the proposal any indication of the size of residences being considered for lots two through five. But I do not favor commercial setbacks being used for single-family residences except for replacing existing nonconforming structures. So one question is how large a house could be built on lots two through five under the current zoning? I'll get an answer to that later. But previously, the board indicated its interest in a vegetation buffer between Veterans Field and what is now shown as lots three and four. There's no mention of retaining or creating a buffer. And while no house footprints are shown, it seems that developing lot four will require eliminating all vegetation along nearly 300 feet of the outfield fence of Veterans Field. The need for a buffer is as much for the developments the developments homeowners as it is for the baseball field. Lack of a buffer raises a host of questions that need to be addressed, including, but not limited to the following. What conditions would be needed to ensure that lighting from the proposed residences would not interfere with baseball games and other events on the field? What assurances would be necessary, perhaps via the homeowners association that's mentioned in the proposal, that ensures that the current uses of Veterans Field could continue? In particular, weekend and night events under the lights, employing the field's PA system and special events with even added sound equipment? And would the proposed development affect the ability to have fireworks displays? As was proposed by the town this past year and as has been conducted by the person I chat them in recent years? I would expect that there may be issues with respect to the proximity of residences to the site where fireworks have been set off. Should construction activity be banned during Memorial Day to Labor Day? Or restricted at other times to be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM? And possibly restricted at other times, such as during Cape Cod League baseball games and other planned events on Veterans Field? To avoid the, well, interruption and/or disturbances that major equipment could make to those activities? Next, regarding stormwater runoff, the drawings I've seen make little, if any, mention of the extent of regrading being proposed. Notwithstanding the severe five-degree slope of the terrain, combined with the extensive drainage plan required to handle the significant increase in stormwater runoff, suggests to me that regrading may be required that will involve extensive clearing of mature trees and the understory as well. I reject this on its own, but also due to the potential for erosion from stormwater runoff during the period of construction that would likely be measured in years rather than months. Lastly, the planning board's request for addressing our concerns regarding parking and sidewalks have not been addressed. Unless and until the applicant addresses these questions and concerns, I will not vote to approve a site plan. In my, it's my continuing hope that a means can be found to save the Montomoi Theater. And given the downsides to the town and its residents of the applicant's submission, I urge my fellow board members to reject the proposed site plan. So those are my comments.
Catherine, this is Katie, you may be muted if you're trying to speak.
Thank you, I am muted and I'm also turned my video off, there you go. Thank you, thank you, Warren, this is Catherine. I think I need to reply to a couple of the points that you've brought out just to clarify for the board, and I may also ask Katie for further clarification. What we have before us is a request for an approval of a definitive site plan. So we just need to remember that as our site plan rules and regulations are set up right now, the applicant is not required to submit, I mean subdivision plan, pardon me. The applicant is not required to also submit site plans at the same time. In some other municipalities, this is done, but it's not done in Chatham. So some of the points that you've brought up regarding the size of the structure, the size of the single-family residence or the setbacks that may be involved, those actually cannot be considered in our consideration of approval for this subdivision plan. Those would be considered by the zoning board of appeals in the process of issuing special permits for single-family residences that would be built using this subdivision plan. But they're not something that we can really consider here. What we consider here is really the subdivision plan only and whether or not it meets our requirements for a subdivision plan in the GB2 zoning district. So I just wanted to mention that. Same thing regarding lighting issues and so on. At this stage, it's not really something that we take under consideration. And also, although certainly I want to say that I admire the strength of your concern for the community, for the community's wishes to preserve the Montomoi Theater. And I know this may be difficult to hear, but what is before the board now is a definitive subdivision plan in a GB2 zoning district. And it is presented to us by a property owner who owns the property. There's not a legal and proper regulatory way that I know of that we can require this property owner to preserve the Montomoi Theater in this plan. It was offered before voluntarily, but that was in another context with another plan and a request for rezoning. So that was a different issue. In this situation, I do not know of a proper way that we can require that. And I'm going to ask Katie for her comments on this.
Madam Chair, I do agree with everything that you said.
Thank you, thank you. So let's continue then with board comments and questions. Bob Witschafter.
So my questions go down, come down to issues that Peter Farber wrote in his questions and as to whether we actually can put single-family units in the GB2. I mean, this is a perfect example of what we're trying to do in the West village where we're trying to encourage multifamily clustered housing to try and force four lots here. For a single family just doesn't make any sense to me. I recognize that there may be, that may not be the matter here, but that my suggestion again is if it is legal to build multifamily units in the GB2, that the applicant consider instead a subdivision that is multifamily clustered housing? Again, I don't know what, you can come back Catherine and tell me that legally we don't have that jurisdiction because I'm bet, that's what you're going to tell me next. That's, that is what I am thinking that we really should be putting in this site.
Okay, yes, thank you, Bob, this is Catherine. I have not read Peter Farber's memo into the record, I was going to read it in public statements opposing the application or under correspondence. So it will be read, we will read the complete memo. But just to reply, you are correct, again, this is not what's before the board. What's before the board is the subdivision itself. And essentially, we do not consider use. We understand that nothing will be able to be constructed here unless it is an allowed use in GB2, either allowed by right or that special permits are granted by the zoning board of appeals for a use that requires special permit. Single-family residences in GB2 do require a special permit. So we would need to understand that if it's the intention of the property owner to build single-family residences, they need to take this to zoning board of appeals for those special permits. Otherwise, those houses will not be built. So, but again, it's not really what we can consider here. Again, I may ask for Katie's comments, but if we disapprove of a definitive subdivision plan that's submitted to us, we have to give our reasons for not approving it. And again, because of the way the process is structured legally, I do not, even though we might say, as, again, as planners for this town and as concerned citizens for this town, that we would prefer to see multifamily housing put in this area, I don't know that that's a legally proper and correct reason that we could give for not approving this subdivision plan. And again, I'll ask for Katie's clarification on this.
Madam Chair, I do agree, a special, if the applicant is looking to put a single-family dwelling on the lots, a special permit will be required from the zoning board of appeals. But at this point in time, what is before you is a division of the land. And if the division of the land meets the GB2 requirements, again, I believe you would have to find fault with the division plan under the subdivision regulations in order to deny the plan.
Thank you.
Clarification on that, then. We, because the size of these parcels is such that they're legitimate parcels in the GB2, without specifying how they're actually going to be used, we're forced to say, yes, we agreed to this plan. Contingent on zoning board saying that they have the permission to put single-family houses there, that's the wrong order. Can we defer our decision until they get a ruling that zoning board would approve to put single-family houses on those properties? Otherwise, we're approving something that quite possibly is not not going to get done or is even legal to be done.
This is Catherine, Katie, I'll ask for your comment on this.
Sure, no problem. So in order for the zoning board of appeals to hear a special permit, the lots need to be created so they can approve. They don't approve in concept, they approve a plan on a lot based on the size of the lot. And again, this has been done, if I'm not mistaken, this was the process that was followed on a recent subdivision on Hydrangea Lane, which was also in a GB zone. The property received subdivision approval and then subsequently received special permits for the single-family dwellings. So that is the process that has been followed in this regard in the past. So this isn't something, this is not something that's, you know, that's a different process than what's been followed previously.
Thank you, Katie.
I just want to make sure that answered the question.
Bob, are you okay with that? It is the process we've used in the past, and this is Catherine speaking. And I know it may not be completely satisfactory, but it's how our situation in Chatham works where we have different boards with different purviews. And in general, that is the case. The zoning board of appeals needs to have the lot and in order to approve the use and the specific plan for construction within that lot. So that's how we've been doing it. And again, just to, if I could just make an almost, what's the word? Almost philosophical comment to the board, it's just a reminder of how zoning works. We have our commitment to this community and all of you are very committed to doing the best that we can for this community. And in that regard, the comments have come up that we would like to see the theater preserved, that we would like to have more multifamily housing available for people of moderate income or working families and so on. And that this would be a perfect spot to do those things. So we have those desires, but unless we put the zoning in place first, what the individual property owner can do, as you all know, is he or she can do whatever is allowed by the current zoning. And the current zoning is GB2. So the owner of this property can create a subdivision and can do construction according to what's allowed in GB2. And in some sense, as a regulatory board, we need to adhere to that in our review of this submission. So let's go on to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I just make a couple of additional comments? Multifamily is, multifamily is not allowed in the GB2 zoning district. Just want to point that out. And the other item is that should the planning board approve this subdivision and the applicant not get their subsequent approvals, there is the possibility that the applicant can come back and have the subdivision rescinded should they try to do something else on the property. So although it may seem strange that, you know, one board goes before another board, all approvals are needed in the end for the construction or the uses, basically the construction to take place. So again, whether it's this board that approves first or the zoning board, all approvals are needed in the end. And so if one board does not approve, the use doesn't go forward.
Thank you, Katie, thank you very much. And so let's go on to Bob Dubis for comments and questions.
Bob Dubis is here, I'd like to ask David a question. From Depot Street to the center of the turnaround, David, could you give me a rough idea how long that is, how long the road is there?
Just bear with me a second here.
That's right, I'm not going anywhere. A rough idea, David?
I think about 150, maybe 175 feet.
All right, all right, thank you.
150, closer to 150.
That's plenty, that's funny. Madam Chairman, I'm only asked that question because I don't feel that a sidewalk on such a small road with one, two, three, four houses on it is going to generate enough traffic car-wise, bicycle-wise, and walking-wise to adamantly make or force anybody to put a sidewalk for, say, 100 feet, because I'm going from the center of the turnaround. To me, it would take away from the quaintness that we're trying to establish, I would imagine, on these four houses. That's my opinion, I mean, we have roads that hundreds of people walk by that are narrow as. hundreds of people walk by that are narrow as narrow as this is. And they get along. The traffic can't be that much on it. Besides, if each house had two cars, that's eight cars. Okay. I don't see where there's plenty of places, I do see, sorry, that where there's plenty of places to have adequate parking for the people that live there. If they have a friend over and I'm sure that they could park in the turnaround or in the driveway and not necessarily have to worry about abundance of cars interrupting the travel flow of the area. The other thing that everybody is trying to save all these trees. And I'm I am a tree saver, even though I'm in the construction business. But there are instances where the people that own the lot or the people that build a subdivision and work it annihilate every tree in the lot, every tree in the area, then they plant their their one tree every 60 feet and get 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 off on that. So when you talk about a buffer zone here, I I feel that Mr. Clark, if he has any heart at all and likes baseball, then I don't believe that he personally will take every single tree off off the field. I it's not my right to tell him you can't. It's our right to ask him if he did to be able to please put some trees back there. I don't know what kind of developer he is, but there are a few in town, more than a few that clear cut. So why are we trying to hold him hostage to this when it's the person that builds the house, designs his own landscaping and and he's the one that can decide what trees stay and what trees go. It's not up to us to tell them that every tree must stay. I'm sure if there's a special tree there that and it can be saved, I would imagine that most normal people would do that. So we're harping on things that I don't think we should be harping on. We should ask maybe. But until everybody doesn't clear cut, how can you ask somebody else not to clear cut? Okay, I I just don't think that's right. One more point of view is I believe that the drainage calculations are pretty good. I've worked with David a lot. He he, we all make a mistake once in a while, and I'm sure that that's six and a half inches that fell. I don't care where you live. A lot of people had a little flooding. That was a special storm. Most of the time, the storm drainages work pretty well. As as far as multifamily houses, and they can't go there, obviously, but but he already proposed to do multifamily housing there and and it and it wasn't accepted. It might have been a little aggressive, but it wasn't accepted. So you ask for something different. This is what we got. I think that the plan from the very beginning has slimmed down and and been trimmed up and is a viable subdivision in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. Let's go on to Roger Griffin. Comments, questions?
Well, I think as much as we don't want to. You know, we're emotionally attached to that property. There's no doubt because of the Montomoy. But there are some things that maybe I don't know how to say this and how that they don't work out the way I want to do, wanted to be. The zoning fit single family, whether we want or not. I mean, this is a developer. He bought this property in this particular situation. He's pretty much able to do what he wants to do. But anyway, it's it made well. Anyway, that's just one comment. I think the buffer between I thought I received something now with the buffer between the the property and the baseball fields and not just from his this, you know, I'm looking, you know, the 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 scoreboard is is more visible than I thought. I think it might even be a little bit of concern with the people that are buying the homes. When those lights go on the baseball field, it's probably going to be like the Griswolds on Christmas vacation. Those lights are going to go on and then go diving underneath the, you know, underneath the carpet. I mean, it's going to be bright. So I, and I don't know how you take care of the buffer after the fact because we don't have the space in the field. And I guess the comment on people trust people to do what they want, but sometimes people you just can't. Sometimes you get a unique guy. You certainly certain rules and regulations. And I think on that we on the buffer strip, especially in the baseball field, I think we'll have to probably address that. The sidewalks, I guess I I don't know for five houses whether we need the sidewalks. I guess I do question, sitting and looking at this letter, I'm saying maybe this letter should have been, I think when we read this and this might have a may want us to have it address it differently, but I think we those are just some like, I think that probably letter should have been written before we make any comments. So obviously, it's gonna maybe change something. I guess, I guess I have to say that this man has the right. This is not going to be suited for mixed dwelling that this particular reason, it's not, like Bob said, we tried that before it didn't work. I guess I'm hoping that maybe we could probably get some information to what's happening on on Main Street with the with with the properties that are left. I would actually have to talk and how the buffer strip is there going to be and how's that going to be handled, what the timeline is. But I think what's we get, we're getting there, we're getting something, but we're not hearing what's going to happen with that property. I think we have to. I think everybody has to get it out there. What 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 is happening, what's not happening? It's not our concern, but of course it's our concern. And I think Mr. Farber's letter, at some point, I think as soon as we read that, I think that has a, it's going to change anything. Maybe, but not really. Yeah. Anyway, no, I think we're not ready to make a decision yet. I think we really want to talk to everybody else, but I think we know the way the decision is gone. Okay, that's all I have to say at this point.
Okay, thank you, Roger. And I'll just clarify a couple of points again. In GB two, neither single family residents or multifamily residents are allowed by right. And the single family residents would require a special permit through the zoning board of appeals, and that's what the applicant will need to do in order to, you know, fulfill his requirements. So just a comment on that. And then let's go to Tom Gagan.
Can I please inter
Yes, Bob, we should have to go ahead.
My my desire here isn't to build a multifamily structure. My desire here is to cluster four units or six units on that property in a way that is better use of that property. I I am, I'm just the artificial need to create four sites that each one of which doesn't really fit well and isn't designed well is is a travesty. I'm if there need to go to the zoning board to get a a variance, let the variance be that they can cluster them together and build six. But the way this lays out, it is just, it's not right for the the area. It's not right for for what we're trying to do with our 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 downtown villages. And I know we haven't gotten it yet, but it's where we're going. So let's let's make an exception. Let's let zoning do something different. Let's give them the 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 direction that we would be willing to accept a a clustered use in this in this parcel. It that not nothing they're trying to do here is is not going to need that variance. So my I I I mean, I'm just, I would really not, I really would like to do something other than what is proposed.
Okay, thank you, Bob. So are you suggesting they should create six slots and six to redesign the subdivision? You would like to see it redesigned and six slots created? Something like that?
Rather see six, six homes build on that property that were laid out in a way where there was much more open space. Everything we're talking about in the West in West Village is is appropriate here. There's a, there's enough room here to build a nice little cluster of homes that has a nice walking area and whatever else. But because they, we have this this process that requires us first to divide it up in the in the way that, you know, each property fits a a a requirement instead of the holistic space and how best to use it. Because of that, we're 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 creating probably the worst design for that space. And and if if that is what the planning board is limited to, then we have, we are failing to support what this community needs.
Okay, thanks, Bob. So let's go on to Tom Gagan. Questions and comments, please?
Catherine, I think John Griffin had his hand up. Roger Griffin had his hand up.
Roger, did you have some more comments before we move on to Tom?
Well, yeah, well, no, yes, I guess we'll just, yeah, I guess we're all you know, we we sort of were there before. We had condominiums proposed, and I mean, I know there were many, but we that that didn't get approved. But I guess I want sometimes, but Bob had a good point. Sometimes we realize that we do what's right for the community. And sometimes maybe it's it's thinking out of the box. I mean, in this property as a total. I mean, do we, should we be revisiting with Mr. Clark to see if there's anything he could get, we were looking to maybe do something with the Juan Moi Theater. Is it ever going to come back? I mean, is this sort of like, if we even if we're talking about doing something with affordable housing not there or attainable housing somewhere else, you're always doing something to give them, you know, benefits or what what can you do is, you know, to 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 work something out. Maybe even tonight, maybe we need an update as to find out what's what's happening. What are they, what are the future plans with with Montomoy? Where's that going?
Okay, thank you, Roger, and thank you, Bob. And again, this is, this is Catherine.
I think we should
Go ahead, Roger. Sorry, I thought you were done.
I think, you know, when we look at the situation that Peter Farber has is introducing, it could be we could be looking at this a little differently. I I, you know, this could be much, but anyway, once we get that letter out there, I think it'd be, you know, everyone will be on the same page.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine. And again, I just feel I have to comment and I'm I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I have to be in this role of, in a sense, being the bearer of sort of the strictness of the situation. And it's absolutely right what Bob Wertschafter is saying and what some of you are bringing up that as the planning board, we want to do the best that we can for this community. But as I understand it, and again, I'll probably ask Katie for her comments. The way that we're also a regulatory board and we do long range planning. In our long range planning, we envision things with the community, together with the community about what we want future development and redevelopment to look like. And that's where we can put in place zoning that will encourage and guide future development and redevelopment in the manner that we feel is best for the community and that the community feels is best for the community. The community would have to adopt those proposed zoning bylaw changes at annual town meeting by two thirds vote. So that's where we can take that role. In this particular situation, and and I'm afraid to say in in our role as a regulatory board, we must work within the zoning bylaws as they are structured right now. And we must work within the site, the subdivision rules and regulations as they are structured now. And so right now, what's before you is a subdivision plan in GB two. And I understand, it's my understanding. Again, as I've said, and again, I'm, I don't want to be the one to say this, but I have to that if the subdivision plan as submitted meets the requirements of the of a subdivision plan in GB two, we don't really have an adequate legal reason for denying our approval. So that's all I'll say. Katie, I'll ask you if you have something more to add to that or to clarify or correct what I've said.
No, Catherine, I I agree with everything that you stated.
Okay, thank you. So let's go on to Tom Gagan. Do you have questions and comments?
Catherine, Tom Gagan, I see Warren Chan's hand raised.
You know, Tom, why don't I give you the opportunity to speak and then we can come back to Warren again? I I just think because I'm wanting all the board members to also have a chance.
Thank you. My my comment would be, or my question would be, if I may ask Katie Donovan for her comment.
Please do.
If I may do that. I don't know if there's a compromise here between what we can do and what the developer property owner would like to do. My question to Katie, is there a process by which this board could incentivize this piece of property to kind of accommodate what we see as an issue? I don't want to get into legal issues of of us violating any laws or regulations that are set forth in our zoning, town zoning. But is it possible if the applicant was willing to do so to talk with us, ask for a continuation and to talk with us about possibly an incentive to incentivize this project?
Katie, I'll let you reply to Tom's question.
Sure, if through the chair, if I could just ask Mr. Gagan, what types of incentives is he referring to? I'm not, I just want to make sure that I answer the question correctly.
Without getting into a lot of specifics, because I think that would defeat any creativity. We've talked as some had mentioned, thinking outside of the box and several applications where we get together with a property owner and say, if you can do this or that, and you can see your way to be supportive, that there would be a mechanism by which the board could approve perhaps more housing on this lot, perhaps smaller homes. I know we talked about doing something that would be closer together with a greater buffer. I just think that if there's a remote possibility that we can legally sit down and talk with the developer builder, property owner to come up with a plan that we could very much enthusiastically support, would that be in everyone's best interest? I don't have the specifics of what we would incentivize, but we certainly have talked about this in the West Chatham Village neighborhood that when a developer wishes to cooperate with the planning board, that we wish to reward or incentivize the project so that the economics of the situation make more sense to the developer and also accomplish what the town is trying to do now and in the future for what we would like to see zoning wise in the town.
Katie, I'm going to let you respond to that one.
Sure. Again, I mean, we we can always have conversations with an applicant. I think that, you know, plans, you know, often evolve through conversations with boards as well as staff. I would say that the just looking at the zoning bylaw, the only possibility I see, and I'm not sure I can, we can ask the applicant or their representative if they've looked at this, is the possibility of an open space residential development and whether or not again, you know, sort of a cluster type subdivision was something that they was what that they looked at and that they'd be interested in doing. That, again, is something that's in our existing protective bylaw. And I think that, you know, again, we can ask the developer and the applicant and their representative whether or not they've considered such type of development.
Thank you, Katie. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Katie. Is it appropriate, Madam Chair, that we ask that question of the property owner at this time? And that is that we would like to ask them for a continuation of what they presented tonight. And that we would like to, as a board, sit down with them and in a public meeting. tonight, and that we would like to, as a board, sit down with them, and in a public meeting, and talk about some other applic, application of this property for the future. And as I keep using the same word over, but to incentivize or certainly to understand that what the property owner wishes to do is financially successful, and that this board isn't trying to limit an individual's ability to own property and to develop it in a way which makes economic sense.
So this is Catherine. Tom, I'll respond to your question by saying that I would want to defer that until later on in the public hearing procedure, because we've still got quite a few steps to go through. So once we go through those steps, the board could consider whether they want to ask the applicant if he would be amenable to that process. So, but later on in the procedure. And again, I'm sorry to be a rather stern taskmaster.
Catherine, I have no, I have no problem with what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
Please use your discretion.
Yeah. But we do need to go through the procedure. And also, again, just a reminder that in this situation, it would be really just, it would be the property owners at their, at their wish, basically, if they would be willing to reconsider. In this particular matter, again, we are somewhat bound by the regulatory procedures. We are bound by the regulatory procedures. And again, I don't know whether there is a proper and legal reason for us to deny approval for this site, for this subdivision plan, excuse me, in a GB2 district, if it meets all the requirements, and it's only our preference that we'd like to see a different type of development. I don't know if that is an adequate and, and legally proper reason to deny.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, I'm not suggesting a denial at all. And any, any suggestion of looking at this development of this property is going to be, is going to require the approval of the applicant if they wish to withdraw this until a future date. So I'm not trying to impose anything on the developer, either to negotiate with us or talk about incentivization, and I'm certainly not implying that what is in front of us now is, that we, as the board, have the ability to deny it. I want this to be much more light and fluffy in terms of quid pro quo, and if that's something that could be accomplished by mutual consent, that's the emphasis that I'm putting on my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Katie, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd like to clarify something.
Yes, please.
So I did just do, I just took a look at the protective bylaw, and unfortunately, I was incorrect. An open space residential development is only allowed in residential zones. It would not be allowed in a GB zone. So that is not an option for this property. So I apologize for the miscommunication.
Would it, Katie, could, this is Catherine, could I ask you, would it be allowed by special permit?
It's, it's actually listed as prohibited in the GB zone.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for clarifying that. Thank you. All right. So, so Arthur, I think we haven't heard from you yet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I'm, I'm going to focus, not that I have any arguments with a lot of the comments that are made, but I'm going to focus on the plan as it was submitted and identify a few things. Most of my comments have to do with information that I'm not seeing there, and I'll be looking for the applicant just to provide this information in the, in a follow-up piece. The, the road where it intersects with the Annabella Lane, intersects with Depot Road, I think it's important that we get a site distance in each direction, and a stopping site distance associated with that, and just get a confirmation of what that is. When I went out there, I wasn't exactly sure what that roadway is. I did an approximation based on location of the building. So that would be helpful for us to determine, is there anything that needs to be dealt with, associated with improving those site distances? I don't think it's going to be a problem, even if there is something going on there. I think that can be easily resolved, but it's something that the applicant should be dealing with as part, part of their construction-related activities. It would also be helpful, I think, that the right-of-way and the roadway edges are staked out, so we can understand where this cul-de-sac is going. I, I could see, once you go to the rear, to the back, where the cul-de-sac's going to be, it's going to drop off substantially. So I think it's helpful to understand where this is. It's often something that we've asked the applicants to do so that we understand what it is that, that we're going, that we visually seeing a site distance after we, we get at stake would be helpful, too. And that sort of ties in with some of my other comments later on. You'll see, as I go, I'm going to just go down my list, because I didn't organize them completely in, in the, in the, in the right order. The applicant did have some good erosion control measures. They showed the details, but we, we didn't provide is a plan that actually shows where those details apply. Are they, you know, in, in the roadway show the limits associated with that? So I asked the applicant just to take one of the drawings that they have there and identify each particular device and where it's located on the plan, so when it's actually being built, we understand that things are being protected in the, in the right fashion. Because right now, you can only assume where they are and not where they should be installed during the construction process. Dimensions of the cul-de-sac, I didn't see any on here. I see for the right-of-way, but I don't see any for the roadway pavement. I don't see, I see on the cross-section on the width, but, you know, we should have dimensions on the radius of the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac itself, the island. We don't have any of those dimensions, so it'd be important to get all of those dimensions on the plan to provide us with clarity about what is actually being built. Same thing with the radiuses that are at the roundings of Depot Road. Again, they're, it's visually all there, but nothing dimensionally to, to lock it in so that we can confirm that that's what's being built. The, I don't have any dispute with Bob Dubus's point about the sidewalks, but I think, I didn't see any waivers on this. There should be waivers if that, requested by the applicant, if that's their desire associated with that. I, I think on the roadway, if you take a look at the profile that they have on that, there's going to be cuts on each, off the edge of the road, in order to install a profile. We call for cross-sections on the proposed roadway. I think it's important that we see what those cross-sections are and see the tailing slopes associated with that. Probably two on the roadway, one at the cul-de-sac will provide us with the information that we need and understand that slopes that need to be cut through there in order to actually create the Annabella Lane. And the next couple have to do with the stormwater report. I'll make a comment to Dave Clark. I commend him on applying the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook criteria. That is exactly what I would have expected. I just need some clarifying points, some additional information. I'm sure it'll support all the statements that he has in here, but you can't tell by, just looking at the report itself. One thing, there's the drainage areas, one, two, and three. You define certain square areas of what those drainage areas are. I can, again, I can assume what they are as, as an engineer, but I think it's important for us to understand, as a board, and all the board members, of each of those drainage areas, a map should be shown that covers what is drainage area one, what is drainage area two, that, and, and three. The next thing is, when you identify in your report that the detention areas are to be provided within the cul-de-sac of Annabella Lane, where the excess will pond and flood the road to a depth of approximately eight inches. Now, that has to do with your cumulative excess runoff from drainage areas one and two for the higher storm event. Perfectly understandable what you're referring to there. However, if you take a look at the profile that you have in there and the contours, and that you only have a, a mountable asphalt curb there that has a three-inch rise on it, the only place that that floodwater's going to go is right down the driveway of lot, probably three and four. So where does that go? That's going to be running off their property into, eventually. And the other reason why I think it's important to see the site visit is when you go behind the scoreboard there, and where the pitcher's area is there, you'll see that it's significantly sloped down, and that means everything's going to come onto the, onto the ball field. Now, you do identify that drainage area three is supposed to be picking that up, and there's supposed to be, I believe there might be, and I might be interpreting this wrong, surface detention. Where is that surface detention? You should show that on your, on your plan in your map there, of where that is in order to capture that impervious area of 17,600 square feet. Again, I think, I think your whole approach makes a lot of sense to me. I understand it, but I, I don't see it completely visually documented, and you may have this in a sketch someplace that you just need to send us as further clarification. I understand, as was stated in the previous board members and discussions associated with the lots themselves, but certainly when we're talking about the runoff that's going to occur here, lots three and four are going to be significant from the standpoint of providing, our board providing comments to the ZBA's associated with special conditions. We're going to need to advise the ZBA that those lots, at least those lots from a stormwater perspective, should have some mitigation associated with it. So the runoff, if there is a higher storm event, and doesn't go down lots three and four, and off into the ball field, this should be retained and dealt with on-site. Now, the stormwater report is identifying that they're proposing to, to do this, to deal with it as part of a surface detention area. I don't know where that is. I'd like to see the details of that, and I think as part of, I'm assuming we'd have a recommendation to the ZBA on this, we would recommend that something be dealt with to mitigate that edge there of lots three and four with the abutting ball field. Let's see. Did you do, going down my list here? Oh, again, just a small little issue. Supposed to be sign-in and seal on all the drawings. There was, you need to sign and seal drawings four and five also. That was not done. Yet I, I'm looking for, perhaps recommending a site visit with the board members once you state out these particular areas, including the back edge of lots three and four, because I think we would be making recommendations to, to ZBA associated, the way the runoff would be coming off those properties there. And I, I guess I'm looking for one other clarification with, you know, with you, Catherine, or Katie. Once we approve this subdivision, as was submitted here, right now, we'd be locking in the dimensions and the line, lot lines for all five lots. Am I understanding it right?
I would understand that to be the case. Katie, is that your, do you agree?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair.
Okay. Unless, unless there's, you know, an amendment that comes through and a modification, right? So if that's the case, and they go ahead and they build these lots two through four, that's pretty much going to lock them in, then that means that if a site plan comes in after the fact on lot one, and there's certain criteria that has to be met, associated with, you know, site plan review associated with that, since that's a commercial lot, we're going to have to do, deal with what the applicant is, is subdividing here at this time. So I know a lot of the, the other board members have said that, you know, this is a cart before the horse. It's, yeah, it's, I understand that. And, but in this case, if the work goes ahead as perfectly they could do, essentially locks in lot one, and the dimensions are probably not going to be able to change if you do develop all the housing first, and you build it and you sell it off, or whatever you do with it. So that means that unless we see some preliminary associated with that about what you propose to do on lot one, that gives you flexibility today to do something, because there is more square footage in those lots than what needs to be in order to be the overall zoning. And before you go to the ZBA, if lot one needs to have some sort of adjustment, that should be done as part of this overall process. It's just a comment. It has nothing to do with the approval of this subdivision as, as submitted. But once it's submitted and we move on with improved definitive subdivision with the planning board, then that locks in the dimensions there, and you're going to have to live with whatever result is on that. And what I saw on some of the initial layouts of how they would place parking and things like that on lot one, it was suspect that that was even viable. So that's the reason why I'm bringing this up, the specific criteria that we have in our bylaws associated with parking and all the other issues, setbacks, and it's something that, you know, we'll have to deal with on lot one when we get that site plan, whether it's a month from now, a year from now, or five years from now on lot one. We will have to deal with the regulations that are in place when they file for that. I think, I think that's about it, Catherine. So I think that there's missing information here on this.
Yes.
I would like the applicant to provide that information. It will just lock in with the documents what it is that we're approving, so that when we go out there to do the inspections and sign-offs and approvals with DPW and other people, that we know what it is you're building, because there's defined dimensions associated with this for everything. It's not just dimensions of the lot lines, but it's dimensions for every single thing that you're building, both at the grade and below grade. So that's, I think that sort of wraps up my points, Catherine.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. And yes, we are also, I'll just comment, missing the response from DPW and Department of Natural Resources, so we are missing their full review also. So, and then I'll just comment that missing information is one reason why the board may choose to continue the public hearing and keep it open. That being said, let's go back to our process. Board comments and questions are done. Let's go to public statements in favor of the application. Do I have anyone in the public? And Christina, please help me if you see a hand raised, who would like to make a statement in favor of the application?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll go to, I should read some correspondence, and I actually have two letters. We have a letter from Michael Wingate of Cedar, Westgate, I'm sorry, of Cedar Street, and then also, as some of you have mentioned, we have a memo from Peter Farber. So let me read first the letter from Michael Westgate, and he is writing in opposition to granting piecemeal approval to portions of the Montemoi Theater property. I'll I'll just read his letter verbatim. "Monomoy Theater was a key ingredient in Chatham's cultural life for many decades. It involved members of the community as well as a diverse cast of theater students here for an intense summer boot camp for many student actors, some of whom went on to careers on Broadway. Friends of Monomoy Theater was an integral part of the community. My mother Sheila Westgate was its president for several years, and upon her death, friends contributed to an endowment in her name. When Greg Clark proposed taking over the Monomoy Theater, he represented that he would continue to operate it as a theater for the benefit of the community. His proposal effectively undercut efforts within the community to raise funds to ensure the continued use of the theater. Mr. Clark should not be permitted to develop the five residential properties proposed for the rear of the property until and unless he includes a plan for the theater itself and the historic Washington Taylor House. Indeed, his plan for residential use may not leave enough of the properties to support a viable theater operation. The parcels comprising the Monomoy Theater should all be treated as one. I urge that the current proposal be rejected at your meeting on September twenty seventh and that Mr. Clark be asked to submit a new plan that puts the theater first and foremost and shows how the residential portion of the properties will support it, both physically and financially. Respectfully, Michael Westgate of Cedar Street." And now, we also have a memo from Peter Farber of Chatham. And Mr. Farber writes, "I have reviewed, I have reviewed the definitive subdivision plan prepared by Clark Engineering and Outermost Land Survey, which is the subject of today's public hearing. The plan shows a subdivision consisting of five lots, all of which are within the historic Monomoy Theater property. Four of the lots have their frontage on a proposed private way identified as Annabelle Lane. The fifth lot, which consists of the remainder of the of the theater property, includes all of its major buildings and fronts directly on Main Street. This letter is directed to the four new lots which are to be carved out of the greater theater property. These lots vary in size from twelve thousand five hundred ninety square feet to fifteen thousand four hundred eighty square feet. I understand that all four lots meet the minimum frontage and area requirements of the Chatham zoning bylaw for lots in the GB two zoning district. I understand that the proposed private way meets all design standards under the board's rules and regulations for the subdivision of land. My comments are therefore limited to the proposed use of the four lots for single-family residential purposes. Under section three of the zoning bylaw, single-family dwellings are not permitted as a matter of right in any of the general business districts. Instead, a special permit must be obtained from the zoning board of appeals. To the best of my knowledge, Chatham Productions LLC has not applied for, much less obtained, a special permit to use any of the four proposed lots for single residential use. This is not merely a matter of timing or a mere technicality. The definitive plan is before the board this afternoon under section eighty-one U of the subdivision control law. At this time, the lots shown on the subdivision plan that the board is being asked to approve or disapprove are not in conformity with the express provisions of the zoning bylaw. The leading case in this area of the law is Beal versus Planning Board of Rockland, Mass. In that case, the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that a planning board acting under the subdivision control law has the authority to disapprove a subdivision plan, excuse me, if the board determines that approval of the plan would result in noncompliance with the applicable zoning bylaw. The appellate courts in Massachusetts continue to apply this rule. See, for example, Berg v. Town of Lexington and Bruni v. Planning Board of Ipswich. In my view, the planning board is not required to disapprove the subdivision plan, but given the strict time constraints imposed by section eighty-one U, as well as the board's inability to control the timetable of Chatham Productions LLC for applying to the zoning board of appeals, it is my view that the board must act to preserve its authority to disapprove the definitive plan in the event the zoning board of appeals were, one, to deny the grant of a special permit for any of the four lots, or two, condition the grant of a special permit on terms that are unacceptable to the property owner. My recommendations for the planning board to condition any action the board might take today on the grant of a special permit by the zoning board of appeals regarding all four lots. The courts in Massachusetts have long recognized the authority of a planning board to condition its approval of a definitive subdivision plan upon a subsequent approval by a different board, commission or town official. See discussion in Brokowski, Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law, section fifteen point oh three G, and cases cited therein. I would encourage the board to take that path today and to either impose such condition or continue the hearing to enable the board to consult with town council as to the legitimacy of the action I have proposed. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. Very truly yours, Peter Farber."
All right. So that was correspondence. Now I will ask for public statements in opposition to this application. And again, Christina, if you can let me know if you see any raised hands?
I do not see any hands.
All right, thank you. One moment, please. And I've just switched audio. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me? So now we'll move on to rebuttal. And I will ask the applicant and his agents if they wish to make any comments in rebuttal to any of the board questions and comments or any of the correspondence that's been read.
David Clark. I think a lot of the information that that was requested are on the plans. I just think it's so much information that the planning board expects now on these plans that it's lost. But regarding the stormwater within Annabelle Lane, the grading on the plan and profiles share clearly shows that a forty-six contour remains southeast or towards the lots at the end of the cul-de-sac. So that would be the detention area. And again, I think the the drainage documents clearly state that this detention area is only for the hundred year storm. Your rules and regulations only require that we handle a twenty-five year storm. As far as the dimensions of the cul-de-sac itself, we show a paving detail. It's eighteen feet wide, each each half of the cul-de-sac. So we're not deviating from that. So it's an eighteen foot wide traveled way down to the cul-de-sac, and it's eighteen feet in width going around it. I think regarding the roundings out at the street, we can certainly put what those radiuses are. I believe they're twenty-five feet, but I can confirm that. Can add site distance, I can add site distances to the plan, but I don't recall that that's a requirement under the regulations. Let's see. Regarding the sidewalks, I believe we don't, are not required to ask for a waiver. I think the way the regulation's written is that the planning board makes a decision whether sidewalks are appropriate or not. So I think I would stand by our initial presentation that no waivers are being requested. Certainly, if the majority of the planning board wants a sidewalk, we'll probably put one in there. But but I think it's not needed in this particular case in that where you're going to walk to. We've, everybody wants to be downtown, so all the foot traffic is going to be going in the other direction. But if if I could be provided with a punch list of what was requested tonight, I'd be happy to address them. And if I feel the plan's deficient, I will add that information to the plan.
Great. Thank you, David. And Greg Clark, did you want to make any comments in rebuttal?
Yes, I do, thank you.
It's up to you.
Yes, no, I do, thank you very much. So just to clarify, Clark Engineering did a very good job of following the guidelines that the town has. And if you look at, David, I think if you look at drawing four of eight, you show a sidewalk around the cul-de-sac. And that is because when we had the first hearing, preliminary hearing several months ago, there was discussions, some of the board members were interested in potentially decreasing the width of the road because it's such a small road. But what we chose to do was go right by the guidelines, so that we weren't asking for anything special, and we would meet the submission requirements. A couple, couple of other things, too, I'd like to address. In the letter that was read from attorney's favor, he points out certain cases. However, in the Piper versus Planning Board of Southborough case, the legislative history of subdivision control law stated, "It gives no indication that planning boards were to have freedom to disapprove plans which comply with the applicable standards merely because the board feels general public considerations make such actions desirable. Accordingly, a planning board must approve a definitive subdivision plan which complies with the board's rules and regulations and the recommendation of the board of health."
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Are you continuing?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
That's it? Okay, thank you very much. All right, then we go back to board comments. And I'll just ask the board, I won't go through all board members, maybe just raise your hand if there's any additional board comments at this point. And at this point, we would also consider whether we are ready to deliberate on this matter and take a final vote, or whether we would prefer to keep the public hearing open and continue it to a future date certain with the request for further information. So any board comments? Yes, whose hand is raised? I can't see who it is.
It's Art Spru.
Art Spru, please go ahead.
Yes, I can provide a list of the things that I think are are relevant, associated with, like a punch list that David was looking for. So I'll send that into you and Katie. I
Good.
I think the whole issue on the site distance falls underneath the category of a safety issue. If we see that there is a site distance, a site distance issue at the intersection of our proposed road, that's a safety issue and falls underneath our purview. So therefore, and we've asked for this considerably in other applications that come before us to, so that would be an important element on this. It's not an owner or a sequest, it's, it's, it's a, it's a safety issue request. And so I think it's important that that be included. But I'll include that in my list.
Okay. That'll be great, Arthur. And again, just a reminder to the board and the public that there's some referrals that responses that we have not yet received, and they're all relevant to these issues. We have not received a response yet from DPW, from Department of Natural Resources, or from Police Department and Traffic Safety. So those are all relevant and important information to have for this consideration. If I could remind the board, I think one of the other issues that came up is, should we or should we not ask for sidewalks? So that's something that the board at some point we need to determine. Again, my, I just, before I go on, I want to ask if other board members have any additional comments. There being none, again, I would just say that
Madam Chair, Warren Shane, I'm sorry, Warren Shane has his hand raised.
Oh, great. Thank you so much, Katie. So Warren, please go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I just, I would like to know what your comments or reaction is to the recommendation made by Mr. Farber with respect to his proposed course of action.
Yes. So I will give you my view, and again, I may ask Katie for some confirmation or clarification. Again, I I am not, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not familiar enough with the case law that he's citing. I think to actually, I think my opinion is to formulate any opinion on Peter Farber's comments, I would want to consult town council and get more information. I think, let me just pull that letter up again, at the end, it's my understanding, my understanding is more the way we have been practicing in our subdivision approvals is that if, very straightforward, and again, I'm being a bit of a stern taskmaster, we are a regulatory board, and if something comes before us that meets the requirements of our regulations, I do not, of our regulations and bylaws, I understand that we actually do not have a legally solid ground for denying approval. And that if we deny approval to any subdivision plan, for example, we have to have very clear reasons, and they do need to be legally viable reasons. In other words, they would need to hold up in land court. And I'm not, so to clarify, I would want to clarify Mr. Farber's comments with town council and just get more information. That would be my opinion. But that's just my opinion. Katie, would you have any comments on Peter Farber's memo?
Madam Chair, just given the late hour that we received this, I did not have an opportunity to look at the case law that he cites. I do believe, though, that, and again, you've stated a number of times, and I think I've agreed with you, that the the applicant has provided a division of land that meets the standards in the GB two zone. Again, if if they are not approved at the zoning board of appeals to put single-family dwellings on, they'll need to revisit whether or not they want to keep that subdivision in effect or ask for it to be rescinded. And so I think that, you know, the applicant, I think, understands that he needs the special permit and, you know, that, but he also needs the subdivision of land in order to be able to ask for the special permit, because he needs the lots created. And so I, again, I'm happy if the board chooses to request town council's opinion on Mr. Farber's letter. I'm happy to make that request on your behalf. But again, I don't see that you would need to not approve this plan based on any of the information that was provided.
Yes, yes, I would agree. I don't think Mr. Farber is presenting us with enough information to deny approval. I would even say to continue the matter only to request town council's clarification of this, I don't know whether I personally would feel comfortable with that. It would be up to the board. I think in this case, however, we do have some, a whole body of information that we're requesting from the applicant of additional information we're requesting if we want to include clarification from town council on this matter with that. You know, I don't see any, I think that's appropriate, that's fine to do. But I wouldn't feel comfortable, and again, this is my individual opinion, I wouldn't feel comfortable if that were the only reason we continued this matter. Does that answer your question, Warren?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. All right. So my sense of the board, if there's no more comments, is that we are actually are not ready to close this ready to close this hearing and deliberate on this matter. I'm sorry, there was a hand raised? Is that Mr. Clark?
It's Greg Clark.
I'm sorry, Greg Clark. Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing in regards to Mr. Farber's, the second last paragraph in his sent, in his, his letter. And he talks about that the, the planning board could condition its approval of definitive subdivision plan upon a subsequent approval by the zoning board, obviously. And we understand that, we understand that, we get this, if this, if this subdivision plan is approved, we still have to go through zoning. If zoning doesn't approve it, then we'll probably withdraw that subdivision and go back to something different. But, an approval by the planning board tonight does not give us the approval to build anything. And then in the end, we ultimately have to come back with each of those four proposed, each of the five proposed lots, and propose what we want to do on it, and go back through the approval process again individually on them. So, there's a second bite of the apple. And if the concern is that, you know, the zone, because it sounded like we were mixing zoning and planning discussions together here this evening. And I feel it should be, the planning board deals with the planning board issues, and the zoning board will deal with the zoning. If it doesn't get approval on zoning, then we're back to step one again. Okay? Thank you, thank you for giving me that time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I think that was a clear expression of the process. Thank you very much. So, again, just going back to where I was, all that being said, and we could do that, we could add a condition that, that our approval of the subdivision plan is contingent upon the Zoning Board of Appeals' approval of the plan for use, and so on. But beyond that, I get a sense of the board that we are not ready to close the public hearing and deliberate and take a formal vote, that there is additional information that the board has requested. And, but I would like to get a sense of the board if that's the case, and then we should vote formally to continue this public hearing to a date certain. Can I get comments from the board? Are you in agreement with that? Or would you prefer to close the public hearing and make a decision, a determination tonight?
Catherine, this is Art Spru. I personally would like the information, I think it's important that we have it included in the plans that are submitted that we're reviewing and will, will be making a vote on and issuing as part of the definitive plans. Otherwise, I would have a long, longer list of conditions to be put on the approval, and it means that you're just going to have to submit it afterwards anyway. So, you want to make us do more work? That's fine, I'll make them do some more work here. That's what I'm asking for, I'm asking for sufficient information, so I understand what is being built and how it's being built, and how it will or won't affect other aspects of the adjacent properties. So, if, I, my desire is, is we continue this and get the information that we're asking.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gagin.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the board continue to date certain this plan that's in front of us now, so that we can have additional information requested by the board submitted before any vote is taken.
Thank you, Mr. Gagin. So I'm going to ask the applicant, if we continue to the October 25th meeting, which means the information needs to be submitted by October 16th, does that work for you? Otherwise, the next meeting is November 8th. So I'm asking, going to ask the applicant, what would be a good date for your convenience?
Well, I'm very unclear on what additional information you're requesting, because as I think David Clark answered some of those questions very clearly, a lot of the things that you're asking for information on will not be addressed until each individual lot is determined what is going to fit on that lot, how it's going to be laid out, and then the buffers, you know, the, what's planted in the buffer zone will be drawn, and so on. So, none of those issues will be determined in the next four weeks. Until we have.
That's correct.
Until we have people that want to purchase those properties, we can't come up with exactly how, you know, it's going to be landscaped and what the buffers will be and different plantings. But our intention is to fully have it so that there is a buffer between the ball field and the homes, there is a buffer between the theater and the homes, there is a buffer between the property on the other side of, of the, of the property there, that they're proposing the six residential units, six-bedroom residential unit. So, we want to allow these homeowners to have some privacy, and they will, we will be involved in submitting a design once we know exactly what's going to fit there. But we can't get there until we can at least find out if zoning will approve this. So we will, that's, that's what I don't understand. Like David said, the road is shown on the plans, it does give the elevations, it gives the existing grades and the proposed grades of the road showing how his drainage works to contain the water from going nowhere going off that road to stay on the road and can be contained on that site. When we do this individual lots, again, we'll have to do the same thing. David will have to draw up the design showing how no water is allowed to leave that site. And I just want to point out that presently, all the water leaves that site and goes to the ball field. As the grade goes from forty, forty-four down to thirty-four at the left field and center field grade, so all the water currently runs that direction. We intend that when we do the development, that those houses will contain all that water, will have to, will have to contain that water. So that grade will change slightly at the property line, most likely be raised to capture it and then keep it on site with the underground drainage detention system. But these things can't be determined now. So again, what I would suggest is that the board vote to approve it with the contingency, and in the meantime, if you have a list of questions, we will work with David to get those questions answered immediately. And if you want more detail, he can get, we can work with him to get that detail immediately. But the process to get to zoning is a month away. If we move this out another month, then we're just moving everything. And the big picture is that everybody wants to know what's happening with the property out on Lot 1. Lot 1 doesn't happen until we know what's happening with lots 2, 3, and 4. Because the money from lots 2, 3, and 4 pays for the large venture of Lot 1. And there is a reason why no one else did purchase Lot, the property out there, because the cost to restore that theater and expand the workings of the theater, because it doesn't meet handicap accessibility code, doesn't meet plumbing code, doesn't meet any of the current codes, has to be completely redone at an extensive dollar amount. So I would suggest that we come to an agreement saying that we approve this plan, knowing that it has to go to zoning, and if you want to put, you want to put a, an additional restriction in there, that you want details on these three or four things that relate to the subdivision itself, not the individual lots, because that won't be developed yet, and everyone needs to understand that. Then we would agree to that, and we'd have no problem with saying, let's, let's move forward and figure this out. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And Arthur, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Catherine. I have no problem with just providing a list of items that are associated with subdivision regulations that are in the, in our bylaws. So, but there are a significant number of items that I've asked for. And those items are a lack of information that is submitted, and that's one of the things that we can, we can actually disapprove a plan on if it's insufficient information for us to actually review and understand all aspects of it. Besides that, we haven't heard from three other departments within the town. I, I absolutely think that we have to continue this. We need the information, we also need the input from the other town departments and boards, so that we can completely condition this in the proper fashion. So, that's, that's, last, last point, thank you.
Thank you. And I just, this is Catherine, I just want to comment that I, I believe, I understand that Arthur is correct in saying that one reason that we can deny approval and vote against approving is insufficient information. And so I would suggest, and my sense of the board is that the board would prefer to continue this matter to a date certain, I'm suggesting the soonest date, which is October 25th. And Mr. Clark, I'm just going to ask you if that can work for you. We will, through the Community Development Department, will, will submit a list of specific information that's required. And it is also true with what Arthur's saying, is we, we are missing internal responses that are very important to review, in reviewing a subdivision plan. And that's not your fault, of course, but it is the situation. So, so I'll ask you, if the board does vote to continue this matter, would October 25th be a convenient date certain? I'm asking Mr. Clark. I think you're muted.
I'm checking.
Yes, David Clark here. Yes, that's sufficient time.
All right, great. So, I think we have a motion from Mr. Gagin. Mr. Gagin, would you accept the amendment to your motion that we, that the motion before the board is to continue this public hearing to the October 25th Planning Board meeting, and to keep the public hearing open? And do you agree to that amendment?
Madam Chair, I would, we also brought up a point that we might want to add, is that Arthur talked about a safety issue, and perhaps the board members, between now and the 25th, should actually schedule ourselves to get out onto the site. Perhaps we'd like to add that to the, to the motion, is that we continue in the interim period of time that we plan a site, site walk.
I think, as I understand, and Katie, please correct me if I'm wrong, that a motion for a site visit would be a separate motion, but that we could do that. Is that correct, Katie?
Madam Chair, I do believe that you could probably do, do it either way, but if, if you, for, just to be safe, you could ask for a separate motion for a site walk to be conducted.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Let's do it as a separate motion. So.
Madam Chair, I, I concur, that we'll do two motions. The first motion is to continue until October 25th.
All right, that's the motion before us. Is there a second?
Art Spru, second.
All right, let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Shane.
Warren Shane, approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus reluctantly approves.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
And Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helper, and I also approve. And then, Tom, would you like to make the other motion about a site visit? And we'll have to schedule, yes?
I would like to make another motion if I could, please.
All right, please go ahead.
And the motion would be that the planning board set a date between now and the October 25th to do a site walk.
All right, and I'll just double check with Katie, this is all right if we don't set the date right now, because you need to check with everybody's schedules and with the property owners. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I would ask whether or not the board members would want a representative from the, either the applicant or the applicant's representative to be on the site walk as well.
I, I think, I would say we would, yes. Tom, do you agree with that amendment to your motion?
Absolutely.
All right. So we have a motion before us to organize a site visit in between now and our next Planning Board meeting, October 25th, with the property owner or his representative. Do I have a second?
Art Spru, second.
All right, let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Shane.
Warren Shane, approve.
Bob Wertschfter.
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helper, and I also approve that we'll do a site visit. So we will continue, we will keep the public hearing open on this matter. This matter is continued to the October 25th Board meeting, and in the interim, the board has voted to have a site visit along with the owner or a representative or agent of the owner at a date to be determined, depending on everybody's schedules. So, and we will prepare a list of the additional information that we want to see on the October 25th meeting and send it to you, Mr. Clark and Mr. Clark. Is that all right?
Catherine, I see Greg Clark has had heaps of raising his hand.
All right. Yes, Mr. Clark, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, so I had a question on the, on the continuation and the next hearing, are we going to limit it to these issues that you're going to send out so that we get productivity out of that meeting, rather than going back and regurgitating everything we talked about this evening? Can we limit that?
Yes, I, in general, we can do that, we can focus in on the issues that, that we're missing at this meeting, we don't need to repeat everything. But understand, the public hearing is still open, so therefore, more correspondence could come in, more public comment could come in. So there, you know, it is still open, so we could get more input.
Okay, and, and, and as you stated earlier, the receipt of the responses from the town agencies is under the control of the town. We can't control that, as you stated.
Yes.
Correct? So if they don't.
Yes, well, I'm sure we'll do everything within our power to get those responses, so that the information is complete.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. So, thank you so much. So let's go on, it is getting late, and my, actually, my phone is also running out of power. So, let's go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding a driveway in a conservancy district, and this is regarding 68 Shell Drive. And do I have a presenter for this matter? I think I do. And please introduce yourself.
Hi, Joe Giacalone, Containment Point LLC for 68 Shell Drive.
Hello, Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, please go ahead.
So this is my third time before the board, we've greatly reduced the plan. We plan to go back to ZBA within the next month or so. We've reduced the driveway quite a bit. Our initial plan was 7,700 square feet, then we went to 5,908. And now we're basically at what is existing, we're, we're, we're actually above by 258 square feet over the existing driveway. No grade changes, no adding of fill material. I do have David Clark on the line, if you have any technical questions.
Okay, thank you, Joe, and I'm just going to ask the board members, please raise your hand if you have any questions or comments. Okay. Thank you, Joe. And I'm just gonna ask the board members, please raise your hand if you have any questions or comments on the revised plan submitted by Mr. Giaccoloni for 68 Shell Drive. And again, just a reminder that we're considering the proposed construction of a driveway in a conservancy district. We're not really considering any of the plans for the building structure as such. Did I see someone's hands, hand raised? Any comments or questions from board members?
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Gagin and Mr. Dubus have their hands raised at this point in time.
All right. Mr. Dubus, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, please. This is a question for David. Between the new proposed driveway and the driveway that we saw the last time, what's the grade elevation difference?
I don't understand your question.
Well, the original driveway is at one grade. Then you proposed a grade change by filling in the new driveway. And so how much above the original driveway is the driveway you're proposing right now? Or is that the original driveway and staying the original driveway?
Well, we're relocating the driveway. So the old driveway is going away.
Yeah. So whatever grade that was, what's the new grade on this driveway? How much higher is it?
Let me try to find that out for you.
What's this whole thing is about?
Well, we're not changing the grades.
So you're telling me that the new driveway is gonna be exactly the same grade as the old driveway?
No.
Okay.
It's in a different location. So it's gonna follow the terrain that's there now, the lawn, basically.
All right. So, so probably when you cut it out, you'd probably be six to eight inches higher with the new driveway over the lawn. So you can, there's a lawn grow that works around it.
Well, no, we'd remove the lawn. We wouldn't put any material on top of the lawn.
I, David, I understand that. You're not talking to a complete moron here.
Well, you just.
Dig out, you're gonna dig out the grass, dig out the lawn, you're gonna put material back in there. And then you're probably gonna have six or eight inches of material so the lawn can grow up a little bit instead of burying the driveway, is what I'm saying. Correct?
The driveway will be flush with a lawn.
Well, it won't be really flush. It should be a little bit higher to take up the grass growing over the years. But anyway, so you're not, you're not, you're not adding, basically, you're not adding anything to the lawn to make it higher.
No. No, that was crystal clear from both the last meeting with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals meeting. They, no, neither of the boards wanted to see any material brought in or, or removed to construct the driveway.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Okay. And then, Mr. Gagin, did you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, I did. I'm having a hard time reading the drawing, or at least understanding the drawing, because it's extremely busy. But I have kind of a technical question. One of the boxes, one of the smaller boxes, if you're looking at the plan to the right of it and in front of the proposed new home building, I assume where the driveway ends is a garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
If you look in the middle of that box, are those septic tanks?
Yes.
So the septic tanks are gonna have a garage over them?
Nope, they're being relocated.
Well, that answers my question because I would think it would be difficult to pump them out. I didn't see anything that talked about them being removed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from other board members for Dave Clark or Mr. Giaccoloni regarding the driveway in the conservancy district? So this is Catherine Helper, and I'll just make a comment. This plan is greatly different from the other two plans that you have submitted. And although our purview is confined to the driveway, I do notice also that there is a reduction in the size of the structure as well. But also, this driveway is significantly reduced in size over your previous submissions. And I, I think that that does answer our request, what we've requested in the, in the past from you. And I wanted to thank you for that reduction in the size of the driveway. It's substantially less increase over the, over the existing driveway, which is good. And we do understand that this driveway you're proposing is of pervious material and allows for the unobstructed flow of water. Mr. Clark, can you comment on that?
Yes, it'll be a pervious driveway, just like the last time. And just like the last time, it will not obstruct the flow of water.
And you have, great. And you have made it very clear that there is no use of fill. You're not elevating this. You're working with the natural contours as they exist under the driveway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So.
Madam Chairman.
If there are no, pardon me?
Madam Chairman, Bob Dubus.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dubus.
I'd like to expedite this. I'd like to make a motion that we send a positive recommendation to the correct people.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. You read my mind. Can I have a second to that motion?
Tom Gagin, second.
All right, let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Tom Gagin?
I approve, Tom Gagin.
And, and this is Catherine Helper, and I approve. So we will send a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on your behalf regarding the proposed construction of a driveway in the conservancy district at 68 Shell Drive. Thank you, Mr. Giaccoloni and Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, not yet, Mr. Dubus. If you, we do have just a couple of points to go over. In fact, actually, we just have one point to go over. And that's a, I do want to go to chairman's comments. I just want to remind everyone about the open meeting law training. That's this Thursday, September 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And it, it will be in the large meeting room at the annex. There will also be a recording available if you're not able to attend it in person on Thursday at that time. And then Katie, we were gonna check if there's possibility of remote participation. Were we able to find anything out?
Madam Chair, I did not get any feedback on that today. I will check again tomorrow and I will email the board if, whether or not remote participation is a possibility.
Katie, this is Art. I received a invite for remote participation if I wanted to, which I would like to do. So I'm just curious if I was the only one that got it.
Yeah, I don't recall receiving it. Yeah. So we'll check again with, with Shanna. And it looks like it should be possible. And maybe we can arrange that for planning board members who would like to participate remotely on Thursday. So we'll check on that and, and it'll get sent out by email if that's a possibility. Thanks, Arthur. So now that being said, Katie, it looks like our agenda for October 25th is pretty full. So I won't bring up the other point about the special meeting. We'll wait on that. And now, Mr. Dubus, did you want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Dubus?
I'm ready. I'm sorry. I would like, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Art Spru, second.
All right. So let's do the roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Abstain.
And this is Catherine Helper, and I approve. So this meeting is adjourned, and let's note the time is 8:35. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and have a good evening.